...scheduled public meeting of the Shreveport Caddo Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission. And we are going to start with our invocation, our Pledge of Allegiance. So stand if you wish and um.
Shall we pray? For gracious God, we thank you now for the privilege of another day. We thank you for the time that we have allotted and that you've allowed us to be here. We pray now that we will be good stewards of the minutes and the moments we have together to the end that we will serve to the best of our abilities and that everything that we do will portend toward the benefit in order to the positive growth of Caddo and Shreveport borough. We ask all of this in Christ's name, amen.
Shall we make the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the good God which is standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks again, everyone, for being here today. We appreciate y'alls commitment to our city and for waiting and taking your afternoon out. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have MPC comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium. For future notification purposes, it's very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name, mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear first from the applicant and then those speaking in favor of that application. Ten minutes will be allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those waiting, wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson in opposition and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment during that time. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decisions on a particular case by contacting our office at 318-673-6480 after 1:00 p.m. tomorrow or by accessing our website at shreveportcaddompc.com. For consent agenda items and other items not requiring a public hearing, public comments can be made upon request by filling out an MPC comment slip. If comments are requested for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to the commission taking action on the agenda item. All of the MPC's boards zoning recommendations are submitted to either the city council or the parish commission for a final decision, depending on the location of the property in question. Please note that it's your responsibility to contact the appropriate governing body about their procedures as related to the matter that you're concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the next, on the table next to the podium and on, in the entryway of this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all your cell phones while the MPC board is in session. The commission values your testimony and we appreciate your compliance with these guidelines. So. We do not have any consent agenda items today, unfortunately.
Did you get the minutes approved?
Oh. Approval of the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Andrews, second by Mr. Jackson. Board. What's your pleasure? Minutes are approved. Thank y'all. All right, so moving directly into our public hearing, our first case is case number 19312C, small planned unit development and preliminary site plan. The applicant is We Care Ministries Outreach Program. If anybody wants to come forward and present that application?
Madam Chair.
Is that an annexation?
MP staff, our staff recommends defer of this case for thirty days in order to get the final information in order to make a recommendation based on the site plan.
Okay, and that's, they're aware of that?
Yes.
Okay. Staff?
Second.
All right, Mr. Jackson, you, motion second by Mr. Andrews? Any discussion? Call for the vote? This is a vote to defer for thirty days. All right, and that motion to defer has been approved. All right, next case is number 19314C, a special use permit and site plan. The applicant is Collins Used Auto Sales. You come forward to state your name and, and a mailing address. If there's someone with the applicant.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Dominique Dinkins. Mailing address, 9045 Kingston Road, apartment 703, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71118.
All right, you tell us a little about your application?
Um, we submitted a application for a special use permit so that we can be able to open up a used car dealership.
Okay, so are you requesting?
Requested a special use permit.
Just a special use permit and approval both?
They provided all the information. This one was deferred last month. They fulfill the requirements for it to be a completed applic, application.
Okay. Are y'all able to access it on the computer?
Oh, yes. It's number seven?
Yes, tab number, tab number seven, y'all. We moved from paper dockets to computerized, so we're learning this new process. All right, does anyone have any questions? Is it Ms. Dinkins or?
Dinkins.
Ms. Dink, okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Dinkins? All right, seeing none, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, any discussion?
Yeah, there, I wanted to just be sure that every, we were, that Ms. Dinkins, I'm assuming it's clear, that there were stipulations that required landscape, a landscape plan, parking lot and driveway to be resurfaced, irrigation plan, lighting plan, drainage plan, all of those things, as well as the issuance of a building permit, in order, as, along with disapproval.
She's been made aware.
Okay.
Like her to come back up and share that with you.
Oh, she has all of those things?
She's been made aware that.
Oh, just, oh, that's, that's good. I just wanted to be sure she was clear about that.
Yeah, and we got somebody else there right now doing the redoing of parking lot and stuff, so.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Do y'all have a motion?
A motion to approve with steps.
All right, a motion by Mr. Jackson, second by Mr. Baron Jackson? All right. Mr. Baron, pass it there. Call for the vote?
Yes.
Am I holding up for someone?
Okay.
All right, and the application is approved. All right, next application, tab number eight, case number 19324C, another special use permit and site plan. The applicant, Reginald Pinkney. Welcome.
Thanks. My name is Reginald Pinkney. I'm at the address of 5931 Fairfield Avenue, and I'm, I'm requesting a special use permit for a barber shop.
All right, anything else you want to tell us about your plan?
It's a beautiful place that I built on the side of my property. Through the process, there were concerns about parking. I have adequate parking as of now because I'm a appointment-based only, so everyone comes one at a time, but I also got permission from the business across the street from me that if I need shared parking space, that they would allow me to do so, and I have a signed letter for that.
Okay. Yeah, I think we saw pictures of that parking area today. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Pinkney? We have such a small group today.
That's it? Okay.
Madam Chair, anybody? We just need to make sure that Mr. Pinkney does understand that the shared parking agreement has to be filed with the Caddo Parish Clerk of Court Office.
How do I go about doing that? Like, if I took this?
You have to take that.
Picture that?
Yeah.
Okay.
That we cannot issue any permits until that's been addressed.
So once I do that, then what's the process?
Come back.
Come back here?
Yes, come back upstairs.
Okay, to the fourth floor?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that good? Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
All right, does anyone have any questions? Hang on just one sec. No, no questions for Mr. Pinkney? All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application?
My name's Carol Hall. My address is 5784 Kenway, Shreveport, Louisiana. I work for Gardner Consultants, which is across the street from Mr. Pinkney, and he had a nice meeting with our boss and indicated he would not be parking on the streets. As long as that's adhered to, we have no objections to his business. And that's all I've got to say.
Okay, wait just one sec. You want to have any questions from Ms. Hall? All right, thank you for coming up. Anyone else here to speak in favor?
My name is Bob Merrick, 5914 Fairfield, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. I owned a commercial property that says, oh. I own here, here, and here. In my, I have an office building here that I, I lease, that is my office and I lease property to it, so. I'm not willing to do a shared parking agreement, and I just, just came from Mr. Gardner's office and they said he wasn't either, so I don't know exactly where his shared parking's coming from, but anyway, I'm in favor of it. Reg, you know, it's been a great neighbor. I'm in favor as long as City Hall and, and Reggie can work out parking. I don't want parking on my property, it's tight as it is, and if he does put a sign, a two-foot square sign, which is, some people probably think that means two feet by two feet, but it means like one foot by two feet, but I mean, you know, if you do the math. Anyway, if he puts a sign, I would prefer that it be closer to his, his actual shop rather than out on Fairfield because it's going to be very obvious that my parking lot would be the parking lot for that shop if, if it is that, that way, and so I don't, I really don't want that. If he has to have one out front, you know, I would prefer some kind of arrow that points to where the shop is. I'd also prefer that it be attached to this building rather than freestanding. I don't know how, I don't know how the city.
I assume you've had these conversations with them?
Pardon?
Have you had these conversations with the applicant already?
Right, right, I don't know what he wants to do with that, but we did talk about the arrow, but I prefer that it be attached to the building. As I, I had the conversation before seeing the application, and I am concerned about parking, I think we all are, because it says here that he would be allowed himself as an operator, a shampoo assistant, and four patrons. To me, that's six people, so parking could get, plus visitors. Parking could get a little nutty, in particular with, with, well, we've got another application coming up later for the Sonic, which is just down the street. So, you know, this, it's getting to be a pretty aggressive parking area and it's, the south side of the street is all residential. So I'm in favor as long as City Hall and Reggie can come up with the answer for parking, but I think it's, it's going to be a real issue. Thank you.
And thank you, I'm sorry, wait just one sec. Any questions? Any questions from, um, Mr. Merrick? All right. No, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I, I think, in listening to what he was saying, I, I think that the stipulations that we put on, obviously we can't tell him where to put a sign and all that, that, that's the speaker's preference, but as it relates to what we were able, are able to do, I think it was a one appointment per person, I mean, excuse me, per, one call, what is it? Something about one.
No more than four customers at a time, and I think he has to make them by appointment, if I remember correctly.
It's by appointment only, yeah.
Right.
And, okay, but, but, I mean, the fact that he is, the, the other part of it is that that's from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. I think, you know, he had just general neighborhood issues as well, so it's still a residence also, so I think as long as the owner is able to adhere to that, that, that should be okay. Some things you can anticipate, but I feel comfortable that, that, that we have gone through some means to, to minimize what ought to be the impact.
And, and Mr. Jordan is sitting, listening to, to these conversations, and we will ensure that the necessary reforms that are required in stipulations are, are met prior to any issuance of anything, the shared parking agreement and so forth.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition? All right, board, what is your pleasure?
So move.
Second. Moved by Mr. Jackson, second by Ms. DeMarto. Any discussion?
Our motion is with the stipulations.
With the stipulations as recommended by the staff? All right, all right. Call for the vote? And that application is approved with steps. All right, moving on to tab number nine, case number 19328C, it's a zoning request. Applicant is Moore and Associates.
Good afternoon, Donnie Barker, Moore and Associates, 1324 North Hearn Avenue, Suite 301, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71107. We are here representing Mr. Yoffe for a rezoning from an RA to an I2, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. Any questions for Mr. Barker? And this is for the gas station, correct? This is for the gas station? Um, all right, I don't see any questions, thank you. Does anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here in opposition? All right, seeing none, board, it's your pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Jackson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jackson. Any discussion? Call for the vote? And that application is approved. Thank you. All right. Tab number 10, case number 19303P, a zoning request. The applicant is Colin Christian.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Colin Christian, 7654 South Lake Shore Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71119.
Tell us a bit about your application.
Um, I'm here today to request a rezoning from a residential 1-7 to a residential 1-12 for allowable equestrian use on our property. Happy to answer any questions I might have.
All right. There's a bunch of attachments, just browsing through them real quick. Does anyone have any questions from Mr. Christian?
Head for the chair. Yes.
Okay, yes, Mr. Andrews.
Sir, can you tell us a little bit about arena, exercise properties, this kind of thing? Is that a part of the plan that we're looking at?
Yes, sir, so basically the plan is we're building a barm home and I have seven stables in the back residential area and the front. There'll be a riding arena and fencing around the property, and there'll be seven stables in total, which we'll use for private horse training lessons and, and boarding for horses at the facility. Laura Velo, who's the co-venture and co-applicant of, of this project, has a background in public health and also has aspirations of doing some therapeutic riding for both disabled and underprivileged children on the property as well, which is in accordance with the zoning we are requesting.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
We've had, at juvenile court, we are having a lot of success with this therapy, with this agoint therapy with our middle schoolers, in particular, our boys, so.
Awesome.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Board, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve. Stipulation.
Motion to approve with steps by Mr. Andrews.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jackson. Any discussion? Call for the vote? Application's approved. Thank you. Next case, tab number 11, case number 19337C, it's another zoning request. The applicant is Shreveport Caddo MPC. This is to rescind an ordinance. Rescind, hello.
Hello.
Welcome.
I'm Stephen Weeks, 4830 Lyon Avenue, number 303, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. I'm here because the, the boundaries of the property, there was an error at the Caddo Assessor's Office whenever we came last year to ask it to be backzoned to the industrial 2, and so we have to redo it to get it all zoned I2.
Madam Chair, the board, this is just sort of a cleanup of what wasn't done when they came in 2017.
Okay.
It completes the process now. So the property is diverted back to the original zoning.
All right, any questions for Mr. Weeks? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
For presenting that. Anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here in opposition? All right, board?
Submove approval.
Motion to approve by Mr. Jackson, second by Mr. Andrews. Any discussion? Call for the vote? It's approved, thanks. Sorry for the hassle. All right. Uh, next case, tab number 12, case number 19343C, another zoning request. Applicant is Tim Brandon Architecture. Welcome.
Thank you, I'm Lisa Frontar with Tim Brandon Architecture. Our address is 2250 Hospital Drive, Suite 116 in Bossier City, 71111. We are presenting a zoning request to change from a C1 and a R17 to a OS for the Shreveport Yacht Club. The yacht club in Marina has been on this property for approximately seventy years, and they would like to make some expansions to their banquet room and their bar area. Currently, under the UDC, they're considered non-conforming as a country club is not permitted under a C1 zone, so we're requesting that the zoning be changed to a OS for open space so that the owner can do these improvements to their property.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
All right, some questions, this has nothing to do with your application. Will they put a new sound system in?
I am not sure about that, but I'll definitely ask.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone in opposition? Seeing none, board, what is your pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, but Alan, this is recommended by the staff, right, and it cleans it up and gets it more in compliance with the UDC, correct?
Right. For the open space, what your park area.
And no stipulations on it, right?
None that I'm aware of.
All right, motion approved.
All right, a motion by Mr. Coffin, a second by Ms. DeMarto. Call for the vote? All right, that application is approved. Thank you. All right, next case, tab number 13, case number 19344C, it's a small planned unit development, a spud, and a site plan. The applicant is CCND. Is there anyone here representing the applicant on this case? Oh, great, okay.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Nile Watley, 722 North Ashley Ridge Loop, representing CCND and the building owner and a future potential tenant. They're basically asking for this small planned unit development so that they could get their light industrial use there. I think the board or the staff had recommended not to try to rezone this to get that, to, rather to get this unit development so that they could have that use, and we're going to add a fence at the back of the property. We're going to leave some landscaping at the back of the property. We're adding some landscaping between us and the residential area. We're going to have some new landscaping at the front of the building. There's going to be a truck that's going to come, a larger truck, come about once a week, at least for now, for this business. This is a new business, by the way, in Shreveport, and it's going to have, you know, new jobs in the area, but they're going to come once a week to make deliveries, and once they get a little busier, probably be twice a week with the big truck, but we've, I've run, checked the site for large trucks and it will fit through there. We're adding some, a little bit of concrete area there, and city had some concern about some detention for that additional concrete, but I think we're going to handle that at the existing detention area. We'll have to make it larger if necessary. They're, they're not, we're not, this project won't use the whole building, the front, there's, this is the back portion of the building. The front two spaces of building will be left to be leased, either for office or another showroom, which is what was there in the past. I think that just about covers it all. You guys have any questions for us?
Any questions? Mr. Watley?
It covered on the steps.
Okay.
Just one. Would you sort of, would you sort of outline how that truck that comes in for delivery will be able to get in and get out at one time a week or less?
This drawing shows basically someone coming, a truck coming down, birdcorns from the east, turning into the facility. That driveway is not a standard wheel driveway, it's a larger driveway. It will then come in through here, there's a gate there, and then, there's only one place for now where this truck's going to back in, and it's going to be here on the end of the building. What they'll do is it'll come in to the back to the paved area. The new paving is really just for the vehicle to make the maneuvering, pull up into the corner back there, and that'll be behind the fence separating this operations from the residence, and then it'll back up onto that ramp and it'll back into the building where they'll unload it, so it won't be any of that outside. And then what it shows is it would come back out and come back and go through, back out, and then back onto the road. This just shows a truck coming in from the east. Now, one coming from the west would be a whole lot easier because it'll be farther away from the driveway, so I didn't show that.
Uh, this just shows a truck coming in from, uh, the east. Now, one coming from the west, it would be a whole lot easier because it'll be farther away from the driveway, so I didn't show that. Does that answer your?
That answers the question. I wanna make sure that, uh, as late, less impact on those residents as possible by the truck coming happens. And we did, we did establish that it will be once per week, correct?
For now. You know, once the bill, hopefully the business, you know, grows and they get, I think it'll go to two trucks a week at that point in time. Yeah, I mean, it's, the folks coming from the residential area are gonna be coming from down here. So there's a good bit of distance between where they were coming in and out of that closest residential area to where that truck would come in. And, uh, we hope that there won't be that much, uh, congestion there for that once a week delivery.
Just trying to look out for Councilman Flurry so he doesn't get called about any negative impacts.
I got you.
I have one question.
Yes, Mr. Andrews.
Mr. Clark, this, this piece of property, we, we visited within and referenced the other ideas and proposals. We visited with it and the previous idea that you left there, uh, did not materialize. So we think this one will materialize. We're real, uh, hopeful that it is very successful. Just so we can put something in this vacant piece of property that's been vacant for quite a period of time.
Yeah, there's a tenant ready.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Work, Jake was the planner on this one. These are good creative uses, trying to make things happen. I hope it wasn't too terrible of an experience. Um, all right, any questions for Mr. Watley? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone in opposition? All right, seeing no opposition, call for the vote.
A motion to approve with the stipulations from the staff.
All right, motion to approve.
Second.
Steps by Ms. De Marteau and second by Mr. Joseph. New discussion? Call for the vote. Application is approved. Thank you very much. Okay. Next case, tab number fourteen. Case number nineteen three forty-five C, special use permit and site plan. The applicant is D E three, Inc. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good afternoon, Jeff Westmoreland of Wiener Weisen Madison, three three zero Marshall Street, Suite one thousand, seven eleven oh one. Uh, here representing D E three, Inc. today. Um, you probably know them as Daquery Express. Here for a special use permit, uh, for on-premises consumption of alcohol. Currently, it is a, this location is a Daquery store and has been since two thousand thirteen. That, what, what we would say in the business is Daqueries to Go. They are looking to expand the space into next door, knock out the wall and, uh, create on-premises, uh, alcohol consumption. Only adding twenty seats, uh, in the adjoining, uh, facility. Daquery Express has been in business since nineteen eighty-seven in this area, uh, owned by the same two gentlemen, Mike Johnson and Randy Comer. They've been in front of this board, uh, the ZBA and City Council multiple times. I think they have a great reputation in the business that they do. They run a tight ship. If you speak with the police department, you'll find out that, uh, they don't have, uh, any real problems with, with this organization. What they're doing here is a very low-key, low-density, low-capacity lounge. The crowd is going to be older crowd by design. The way they do that is by the type of music they play and kind of the way they set the place up. There will be no loud.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I'm in that category, so, you know, we've been talking about the playlist a little bit, so. No loud music, no music heard outside, no bands, nothing in the parking lot, just very low-key. Uh, the neighborhood behind is, uh, Millicent Point Apartments, I believe. Uh, it is the set of apartments that run right there on Millicent Way. Parking is a non-issue. The other, uh, businesses here, first, they meet the parking requirements, but the other businesses here have very low-density parking and they have almost no parking in the evenings. Uh, we have spoken with Councilman Busher on this. Uh, he has indicated to, uh, Mike Johnson, the owner, he has no problem, uh, with this application. Uh, the staff, as you can see, has, uh, approved, uh, or recommended approval of the application, uh, and those are pretty much all the facts.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Westmoreland. Anyone have any questions? All right, no questions.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition? All right.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. De Marteau.
Second.
Second by Mr. Joseph. New discussion? Call for the vote.
I'm gonna see what their music list is.
I know. Application is approved. Thank you very much. All right, next case is tab number fifteen. Case number nineteen three forty-six C, special use permit and site plan. The applicant is Jambo LLC.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm, uh, Jason Booker, uh, one oh nine Southfield Road, apartment eleven, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one zero five. I'm, uh, requesting a special use permit and site approval plan for, uh, say, existing building for retail sale of alcohol, um, that we consume off premises. Uh, the corner of three fif, uh, three fifteen Pier Avenue and Gordon Street.
All right, I'm sorry, what, did you say be consumed off the premises?
Off premises, yes.
Packaged, okay. Any questions for Mr., it's Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Booker?
I have one coming, Madam Chair.
Uh-huh, yes, Mr. Andrews.
Sir, good afternoon.
Thank you.
Is appreciated, uh, we do have a letter of opposition. Are you or, are you aware of that?
No, I didn't.
Document that's in front of me is, uh, comes from, uh, Mr. Williamson that's in that, obviously Johnny Williamson in that area that deals with, uh, that particular part of the city. Have you spent any time with any of the neighbors in that area in relative to, uh, your desires to start selling alcohol in that property?
No, uh, all lots are empty around. Um, direct across is empty lot to the north, to the south, empty lot, but empty lot directly behind it. And there's a house back there, so I don't, I'm not sure which, how, how far. I need to go talk to neighbors about it. Uh, in the site plan, I mean, in the recommendations, they said, um, didn't think, uh, the, the back fence would be enough to mitigate to the nuisance or anything. So it's only a five foot. It could be raised to, we can get a eight-foot wood fence instead of a five-foot chain, chain link fence. If that would help, uh, security, we can also, you know, hire a licensed security guard to, on, for the premises, 'cause there's, there's not one now.
Will you be operating that business or are you gonna be leasing it to someone else?
I would be operating it.
Have you had any experience in this area?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
So, the, there's a different, Ms. Madam Chair, but there's a different owner of the building?
Yes, I, I, I lease from, uh, Martha Tenoli. She owns the, the, it's like.
Is there a business in there already?
Yes, uh, it was. It was my, I had a tax officer there. I'm changing that over.
So it's not, it's not currently a store?
It's not currently a store.
But there's a store on the premise?
There is a convenience store next door.
Right, so this is a separate?
This is separate from them.
Facility.
Yes.
Same building?
Uh, yes, it's a different suite.
Yeah, same, the same physical building, just a separate suite. So this would be like, um, uh, like I, I guess they, where you have this drugstore, like Walmart or something that got this other building right on the side. So it's under the same roof in the same, in a different suite though of the same building?
Yes, yeah, we do have separate doors, like, and there's no interest from their building to our building.
Okay.
It's kind of a strip mall type.
I see.
Property.
Yeah, I didn't know. All right, I'm with this.
All right, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Booker.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Sorry, thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak in opposition?
Yes, I am.
The principal spokesperson will have ten minutes, so choose your principal spokesperson wisely.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. If I'll just state your name and a mailing address, please.
Yes, ma'am. Just give me a few seconds to get myself.
Take your time.
I'm here.
Don't take that literally.
Good afternoon, Mr. Andrews, and good afternoon to everybody on the P.C. committee, or, I never thought I'd have to come down here and defend this C two. But I think you remember me when y'all were doing the UCD or... Excuse me for being a little nervous, but I'm an old country boy and that's how it is.
Just start with this.
My name is Johnny Williamson.
Okay.
I live at three twelve Pier Avenue, practically directly across from three fifteen. I've been there since nineteen eighty-three. And some of the things I've seen would make you wanna pull your hair out. I'm gonna start the latest thing and then, uh, go ahead and do my little reading here. My wife and I decided to go to Samtown, uh, two weeks ago today, get a room and get away from it all. About two o'clock that morning, someone called me on my cell phone and said, "Hey, do you see him fighting out there?" The store is closed. They're in a parking lot fighting. But I didn't go over there. I just stayed there and wished for the best of them. The first thing I'd like to talk about is our, our opposition against the site plan. Do you have the site plan? Again, I'm, uh, I have a calculator and I try to add things up and I had to get my granddaughter. She's seven years, I mean, I'm sorry, she's in the seventh grade. Let me read this right quick. The Pier Avenue Neighbor Association would like to challenge the proposed Daquery Shop site plan. In front of the Daquery Shop, which is the west side, the Pier Avenue side, his site plan shows a hundred and eighty-three point four feet. If you add the numbers up, you'll get one eighty-three point four. That's gonna be nine plus thirty-two plus twenty-nine plus twenty-six plus thirteen plus point four, twenty-eight, forty-six, and you will get one eighty-three point four feet. I went down to Cattle Parish. Can you show them this right here? As you can see, the line is only a hundred and sixty feet. Now, my granddaughter, again, got on the calculator. She's in the seventh grade. And she, she said, "Grandad, this is gonna add up." So I don't know how you got those numbers. We're opposing the site plan. And after you look at the side of the building, uh, and you add up the figures that he have, you're gonna get eighty-nine point three feet. If you look at the lights, there's two lights that this building is sitting on. Each light is forty feet. That's eighty feet. Again, my granddaughter said, "Grandad, this don't add up." And it don't. On his site plan, he said that it's, uh, the building is six feet from the fence line. It's less than four feet. Hopefully, I didn't invade the privacy of the property, but I went and measured it when it was closed one evening, and it's less than four feet. You know, you can't, you should have your numbers right. I used to be an engineer with the telephone company. And I had a supervisor who used to take my work home to make sure he could find something wrong with it. So I know how to add the numbers up. These numbers are wrong, but if his, if these numbers are wrong, and they are, can I see the site plan? That tells me the building is wrong too. As far as the swap he was concerned. Let me go on. I only got, uh, probably five minutes left.
Six minutes and twelve seconds.
Uh, the Pier Avenue Neighbor Association, again, would like to challenge the proposed Daquery Shop special use permit. The Pier Avenue Neighbor Association has listed several reasons why we do not want this Daquery Shop in our community. Reason number one, additional crime. People standing in front of this store all during the day begging for quarters, begging for nickels. I don't go over there, and I'm gonna tell you why, and I hope you don't throw me out of here. About five years ago, I was over there. I opened the door for this elderly lady. And this young man said, "Can I get fifty cent from you?" And she said, in a nice way, she said, "Baby, I don't have any money," and he called her a bitch. I'm a correctional, I was a correctional officer at Four Way Correctional Center, had my uniform on, but I didn't have my pistol on. And I told him, "I'd have blow your mother," excuse me, "I would blow your brains out if I had my pistol." But talking to the elderly lady like that. Well, let me go on. The traffic in the neighborhood. This is gonna increase the traffic. Allen Avenue and Pier Avenue, especially Pier Avenue, that's where I live at, there's more traffic on Pier Avenue than any street in that neighborhood. Big trucks, cars coming through there, zooming through there. I pray that they don't hit some little kid. The noise. I stay directly across the street, all during the day and the night, I got to hear boom, 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 boom. The, the store owner don't stop it. You can't go to circle K with that noise. They don't stop that at the store. He said he gonna have a security guard. Please. With the hours you're gonna be open? The lottery. There are these big signs up there saying, "No lottery." They lottery all day, begging for money. They go inside, get the beer, and three or four of them sucking on the same beer. I pray that nobody has HIV, 'cause you're gonna get it, sucking on that beer. The same way with the Daquery. They're gonna buy that Daquery. Anybody in here that buys a Daquery, know when you get the Daquery, get to your vehicle, you're gonna suck on that straw. You're gonna, you're not gonna wait till you get home, it's gonna melt. This is gonna require additional police presence and patrols in the neighborhood, which is great. Cut down on the crime. The proposed Daquery Shop will increase DWI and DUI. Again, these police cars got radios in them. Hey, there's a white excursion leaving with a Daquery. He's headed west on, uh, Ford Street or east on Ford Street. Hey, you've seen that commercial, you let the window down, the police said, "Sir, have you been drinking?" He gonna smell it. You going to jail. And there we are again. Police always messing with us. But, hey, he's doing his job. Now, here's something that really breaks my heart. And hopefully, the good Lord, uh, he helped me get up there where he's at for bringing this to y'all's attention. Y'all had a good plan, but, uh, I wanna show this one. You can't really see it, but I'm gonna tell you what's on there. There's over ten churches in that vicinity. I'm gonna name them for you. Midway Baptist, Magnolia Baptist, Trinity Baptist, Saint Rest, Perrine Street Baptist Church, Progressive Christian Baptist Church, Crusaders Temple, Faith Mission Number One, Hollywood Baptist Church, and that's one called the Day Service. There's ten of them. My granddaughter said, "Grandad, you forgot two more of them." They have church at the Y W C A on Sunday. I haven't been to all of them, but I've been to a couple of them and they have good service and you all welcome, I'm sure, to come out in the neighborhood. Again... Could you show your site plan one more time? I've been there since 1983. I've got two granddaughters. When I get ready to walk out the door... I'm sorry, I meant the... This one. There's an alley right here. I've gotta look out the door, make sure nobody's not urinating out in the alley when my grandkids come out. Because the store doesn't have a bathroom. They sell in deli and stuff, but you can't wash your hands. The people that work there are in the alley doing the same thing. You have a site plan of the facility. You know, I'm glad I had this opportunity today. Because, again, I've been there since 1983. If I run out of time, I was down there yesterday, and everybody was... Yeah, I don't have a clock, do you?
Yes, you do.
Thirty seconds. Let me hurry up. Sorry. The store. You've seen the site plan. Why you got all these signs? What you hiding? I'm gonna go to MPC and find out what can I do to get some of these signs down, because this is an ISO to the community. It's an ISO for me to walk out the door and see all these signs at this store. I don't know what it is you're hiding or what you want us to see. We know you sell beer. We know you sell cigarettes. You need all them signs up there. But, again, back to the daiquiri. Please. We don't need this in our neighborhood. I'm gonna say this, and I promise I'm gonna leave. Couple of years ago, I thought I was gonna get kicked out of the neighborhood. I went to one of the minister's meetings, and I told him, "It's a shame on Sunday morning, you gotta come through hell in Allendale to get to your church, to get to heaven. Come out of heaven and go back through hell in Allendale to get to your house." It's a shame. We don't need... I'm gonna stop, because I'm about to cry.
Thank you. We appreciate your participating and coming here.
Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna stop, because I...
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. Any questions for Mr. Williamson? Nope, I think we got you. Thank you very much.
No, thank y'all. I appreciate the opportunity. And, again, Mr. Andrews, I didn't think I had to come down here and defend, because I actually had a C2 in my own selfish reasons, because I had a few pieces of property that was our zone C2. But I'm beginning to wish I would have let it be residential.
Thank you for coming.
Thank y'all for letting me be here.
Is there anybody else here?
One more thing. I'd like to compliment the lady right here. She made me really feel at home. Gave you paper clips, gave me a bottle of water. I told her that day that she'd offer me some snacks. So...
Thank you.
Give her a ghost talk, please.
We are here to please. Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairman, to other members of the commission, my name is Najiri Kamara. My address is 1505 Abbey Street. And I am here as president of the Allendale Lakeside Leverton Heights Partnership, of which Mr. Williamson's Pear Avenue Neighborhood Association is a member, as well as Mr. Glass, who is here representing the Lakeside Area Neighborhood Association. But our organization is a membership organization of all of the residents, the homeowners, property owners, business owners, neighborhood groups, churches, and other individuals who are interested in the... And concerned about the future growth and development and preservation of this geographically significant and historic area of the city of Shreveport and Parish of Cattle. And we exist to serve as a vehicle for our community to connect to available resources to meet the needs of the residents. We currently have the Choice Neighborhood Initiative that is funding different and various projects. And the establishment of a daiquiri shop is diametrically opposed to the concept of what we wanted to do for Allendale, to be a choice neighborhood. The officers and board of directors of the partnership hereby makes it... It makes public its formal position on the application for this 300 block of Pier Avenue. While we support economic development that will provide jobs and opportunities to the residents of the area, we do not support the continued proliferation of establishments that sell alcoholic beverages within our community. We are opposed to the application, and we ask that you deny the request. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Kamara. Hang on one sec. Let me see if anyone has any questions for you. Any questions from our board, from... It's Ms. Kamara?
Yes.
That's right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application?
I'm sorry. I forgot I was to put a little sheet in here.
That's okay. You can pull the microphone down if you want.
Okay. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Virginia Joyner, and I live at the 1 Oakley Drive. In the early 1940s, my father bought a duplex at 1546 and 1548 Garden Street. It is right across the street from where y'all are thinking about approving. And I hope you don't. I hope you consider. Allendale is a good neighborhood, and I have wonderful renters. I inherited that piece of property, and I have wonderful renters in there. And I hope that y'all will disapprove the resolute... Whatever y'all call it.
The application.
Application, yes. Thank y'all so much.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Joyner. Any questions for Ms. Joyner? Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application?
Good afternoon. Rudolph Glass, 1735 Arlington, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71103. I am the president of the Lakeside Area Neighborhood Association. And I'm here to speak in opposition to the daiquiri shop. I would like to say, first of all, I was pleased that the young man is an entrepreneur and trying to do business. I just wish that it was a different type of business. We're in opposition. There's enough liquor stores in our community. We want to keep the community with things beneficial to the residents in the community. Maybe a retail store or grocery store would be probably about the only thing that I would like to see in that area. So... With this being said, I just hope that the young man doesn't give up on his entrepreneurship but just finds something else to provide to his people. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Glass. Any questions? All right. Is anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application?
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Louis Taylor. I pastor Temple Vision Church in Allendale. And my opposition is that, at a time when our city is trying to curb violence in this city, when we have so many killings and murderers, yet we're gonna bring something that we know that causes people to act differently when they drink it. And we know alcohol causes people to act differently. The young man has a great idea about business, but take your business somewhere else. We don't need it in Allendale. I ride through Allendale, and I get sick because of the things that I see, how the houses are torn down, how they're growing up. Nobody wants to come to Allendale. Nobody that I know and that comes to my church stops at that store, simply because of people outside begging, and they just look at them crazy when they come there, and they just refuse to go there. I think our city is trying to recover, and for this to allow this to come into our community is detrimental to our city. I think that if the young man, like I say, has a service station, I'll support it. I'll buy my gas at your service station. I'll tell the people about it, but not a daiquiri shop. So if you would, please deny this request today.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor, was it?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor? All right. Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in opposition?
My name is Marilyn Jones. My address is 1609 Park Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana. And I came to speak in opposition to the daiquiri shop. I own the fire station that's adjacent to it at the corner of Pier and Garden. And the plans... I had a whole lot of stuff that I was gonna say, so I'm just gonna speak from heart, because I'm on the clock. So Shreveport was awarded that $24.2 million to fix high-poverty neighborhoods, revitalization for Allendale, Leverton Heights, and the downtown area. The reason it was called a choice neighborhood is because it leverages significant public and private dollars to support locally-driven strategies that address struggling neighborhoods with distressed public or HUD-assisted housing. The vision was to create a thriving, safe, and healthy community of diversity and opportunity with strong links to schools, training, and jobs. A neighborhood that honors heritage and a community that fosters positive outcomes. That positive neighborhood plan is built around goals, one being attracting new residents, improving the lives of the existing residents through new amenities and services, and to build upon the neighborhood's cultural heritage and identity. So I'm looking through and looking at how Allendale, that area, used to be at the corner... Well, Mylum at Pier Avenue used to be the hub for African-American residents of Shreveport, and now it's just a shell of itself. It's not even a shell. It's less than a skeleton. Ms. Bonnie Moore worked at the forefront of all the... To try to get the community to be... I clean my lot. When I clean my lot, all I'm picking up are beer bottles, alcohol bottles, and all kind of other trash that, you know, you have... Must wear gloves to pick up. The store, the store in quote, across the street has absolutely nothing fresh. This area is a food desert. There's nothing fresh. The eggs, I looked at the eggs in there. They look like they're... I was about to say, as old as me, but that would be pushing it. So you have... I mean, there's nothing in there. They say they have a deli. I looked. There's nothing that would entice me to buy anything out of that place. They have a cooler that, like, the whole wall, okay? One-fourth of it has... Where there's not the other three-fourths that has alcohol. The other fourth of it has the sugary drinks that you wouldn't... Probably wouldn't allow your child to drink, full of high-fructose corn syrups, dyes, and all this stuff. So there's really no purpose with it being there. Their dumpster is not used. It has wheezes growing up through the dumpster. Never been dumped. So when I clean my lot, I shouldn't put this on record, but I take my stuff and put it in their dump, because that's where it came from. I put it in their dumpster. So I have a goal. I would like to do my fire station. I would like to renovate it so that I can feed the children in that neighborhood. The assessor's office told me that I don't have to have, like, it built up. I can take... I saw a car when they had the African-American History Parade. They drove downtown, and they were just feeding the homeless out of the trunk of their car. So I don't have to have all these highfalutin sponsors and all that stuff to do that. But I know that the kids in the neighborhood, there's a possibility that they're hungry because there's nothing in the store for them to eat. So I just think that with the whole reasoning for the $24.2 million... Grant, this is diametrically opposed to what they're trying to do to bring more alcohol in the area. You already have enough negativity there. Don't get on the corner and start praying when they have something that goes on. Let's get together and link arms, and we're gonna pray and pray this away. You have an opportunity now to deny these people to bring more negativity in the neighborhood. Come on. It speaks against what that $24.2 million was designed to do.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Thank you. I appreciate your passionate comments. Your time's expired.
Oh, yeah.
That's all. Thank you.
There's no way I would've made it through.
Any questions for Ms. Jones? No questions. All right. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in opposition?
Good evening. My name is Robert Handy. I stay at 1821 Perrin Street. How you doing, Mr. Jackson? I'm a long-life resident of the Allendale Lakeside Bottoms Community, and I serve as the vice president of the organization that Ms. Najiri serves as president of. And I'm here to speak against the daiquiri shop. Nothing personally against the gentleman that wants to own it. Me, myself, for the last 15 to 20 years, most of my work has definitely been trying to improve my community. I love my community, and let me put that on record. I love the Allendale Lakeside Leverton Heights community. And I'm on the streets daily. A lot of the beer drinkers and drug users that you've heard mentioned of today, I speak to them as well. I work with them as well. Because we're all peoples, and we all deserve that respect. But in saying that, I'm very much against any type of business or anything or anyone that's gonna bring more crime into our community. And I think that that's just what this particular business would do. I don't think that that's the purpose of him wanting to open this business. But having it opening, any and everyone in this room knows that once we consume alcohol, then there's a lot of other things that comes behind that. And I've seen it happen, not just on that corner, but in that entire community. And as of right now, for those who don't go through there on a daily basis, and I know Mr. Williams stays across the street. But as of right now, that particular corner, believe it or not, is getting better. It is getting better. But I do believe with that daiquiri business being put there, it would reverse itself. And it won't take long for that to be done. So I definitely disagree with that permit being issued.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Handy. Does anyone have any questions? All right. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in opposition?
I'm Liberta Jameson Myers. I own property at 304 Pier Avenue. This session opened with a prayer and the pledge of allegiance. And so the decisions that we make as citizens are to fulfill what that pledge says. And if we want to train children to be contributing citizens of the future, not only of this city, this nation, but of the world, then we have to make decisions that they are trained and that they grow up in a setting where they're not haunted by drunks and drugs. And liquor will do that. All we need is one more liquor store to harm children that we want to be good citizens. I'm an educator. Citizenship, history. And when you hear all of this, how do you bring children up to be good citizens if they're going to be just surrounded by liquor, which leads to other forms of crimes? And if you want to be good tax-paying citizens, they're gonna be in prison. And the ones who own the liquor store are gonna send their children to the best schools in the nation to get a good education. We, as public citizens of this nation, have got to make the decisions that are best for children who have to move on to be the leaders, not only of Shreveport, but of the nation and the world. And so I hope that when we make these decisions and give the rights for people to sell liquor all over children, but they send their children to the best schools. They live in the best neighborhoods, but they sell this liquor. And if most of the people don't work in that area, that means crime, because they take money for this liquor. So they're gonna have to commit crimes to get the money in order to buy the liquor. Please. If we want to start this meeting with a prayer and the pledge of allegiance, we'll keep that pledge of allegiance in mind when we make decisions that affect young lives. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Jameson. Any questions for Ms. Jameson? Anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone else here to speak in opposition? All right. Mr. Booker, would you care to come back for rebuttal?
That was a lot. Before I make a rebuttal and think, is there anybody I could pull?
Um, before I make a rebuttal and thing, is there any way I could pull my application and resubmit it for a different location?
Um, question, yeah. Mr. Clark, um...
No, this, this...
So in order to find out, I had to pay another sixteen hundred to head to start the process.
Listen, Mr. Madam Chair.
Yes, yes.
Is, the, the question is really about, I think what happens is, it appears you may be asking two questions. There's a question whether you can pull the application that's on this agenda.
Yeah, and start the process over. I mean, without having to pay the sixteen hundred again. I didn't know I had this much opposition.
Right.
And I really don't want to rebut.
So, so that's, that's the question right there.
And, and the answer is he can apply at another location, but he would have to go through the same process.
Right, right. So I'm saying, I'm saying, I think the confusion was, we were saying no because you said, can I pull the application and apply for it at another, at another place?
Well, my thing about it is the cost I paid, sixteen hundred, I can, I mean, I don't want to pay that again. I already have another opposition, I mean, location in mind.
No, that's what happens. It will be...
I had to pay sixteen hundred again.
But it's a new application process. That's what I think it wanted you to know about.
All right. Um, basically, I'm not going to really dispute a lot they said. Just simple things. I'm not responsible for the crime in the area. Um, there's a lot of stuff they complained about. It's the store next to mine. And the site plan, I measured from the curb. That's why the extra nine inches are there. Uh, other than that, y'all can go ahead and make y'all's decision. Thank y'all.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Booker about the mitigation issue at all?
No. I, I mean, I'm not sure that that's for him. The staff and our, in our, um, in, in the recommendations that we received from the staff had, um, so we, we always hear a lot of stuff, um, we, we can't make decisions on how people feel. That's not what we're here to do. It's about land use and what's best for that neighborhood and those kinds of things as relates to rights and the land use. So we don't get the chance. We, we would be in trouble if we just injected our own opinion on all of this. But the staff has suggested that there is no, that there's some issues that it does not, um, mitigate. I, I think is what the issue was against.
Yeah, that, that back, the back is a button against this. That's what I saw. The back of button against that fence, that's only a five-foot fence. And they, they feel like it was, it wouldn't, um, it's to mitigate the problem of the nuisance of, of, you know, same traffic and everything right there, especially putting the light on that side. That fence, a five-foot fence wouldn't cover that. Or the shrubbery wouldn't cover that. So if there's an eight-foot fence, then maybe that will help. You know what I'm saying? I, I'm...
I, I don't, I mean, that's a, that's a question that the planners would have to be able to answer that. But for us, it was a question of did it substantially mitigate the negative effects that, uh, uh, that a C4 naturally has on a residential neighborhood? Uh, that's the real effects that we're talking about. Other stuff, I mean, I understand people have their own emotional attachments to community. That's not the issue for us. But there is an issue that it appears that there's an impact that's going to always happen when a C4 is right next to a residential area. And you've got to be able to substantially mitigate that. I mean, and, and sometimes just a tall fence may be a tall fence, but it may not substantially mitigate against the effects that happen in that particular community.
Yeah, I understand that. But all the information I was given was, was that the establishment would not be compatible with neighborhood residences. Now, in the, in the site plan review, that's why they said was a fence insecurity. I need, I don't have any, anything quantifiable to, 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 to know what I could change that will make, that'll make, that'll, you know what I'm saying, mitigate that problem.
All right. If I may, Madam Chair, I don't, I don't, I don't think that, uh, you know, when, when you, when you try to open up a, a, a intrusive use in the middle of a neighborhood, it's always, it's always a problem. Because you're right in the middle of a neighborhood and you're introducing, bringing in something that's, that's not compatible with the neighborhood. Possibly when you came in and, and I, I'm feeling your pain of investing your sixteen hundred dollars and apparently getting nothing out of the deal. And apparently, we possibly did not advise you of exactly what your application was consistent of and the problems that you would be confronted with by submitting this application. But I don't think that you would be able to, to mitigate, uh, the negative impacts of, of the things that, that, that occur with the use that you're talking about. Because you're right there and it, it may look like a, a vacant neighborhood right now. But you're right there in the middle of that neighborhood. And in order for that neighborhood to have an opportunity to grow, uh, we have to try to mitigate as much as possible anything that's negative, that slows down that process. And I don't know if that helped. We would be more than happy to, if you'd like to come in and sit down and, and talk with us to discuss, uh, you know, future applications and what they consist of and what you need to look forward to, we would be more than happy to sit down with you and, and go through that process.
We have a whole staff of planned trainers, modern urban planning, that can sit and visit with you about options and other ideas and brainstorm with you and I, and they're really fun to talk to, so.
And like everybody has said here, even the people that are opposed to your application, they enjoy seeing a young man with entrepreneurial ideas that want to go into business and make a try at being successful. So as you leave here, it, it's not that these citizens are against you. All I heard was that they support you. But if you want to come in and sit down and talk to us about those things, we are more than happy, like Ms. Coop, Mrs. Cooper said, have a staff of very capable young people that can be of all kind of assistance to you in directing you and pointing out to you, uh, areas and places that you might want to go to set up whatever type of business you want to set up. And I'll give you my card when you pass by. You can just give me a call.
Thank you.
And Mr. Joseph, I think, had some questions.
Mr. Booker, I want to basically echo what's been said about a number of people here on this side of the days and out in the audience. It's commendable that you have this desire. And I don't want you, I can, I can sense dejection in your voice and in your demeanor. I want you to not be dejected. I want you to go back to the drawing board and start over.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Booker.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, all right. Um, Board, it's your pleasure. He's trying to be nice. Okay. Um, Board?
Madam Chair, based on the position of the staff and the recommendations and those properties presented to us, my motion is to deny.
One second.
All right. A motion to deny by Mr. Andrews, second by Mr. Joseph. And this would be a, a vote of yes to deny the application. Call for the vote. A vote of no would approve the app, or would, no, a vote of no would be against your motion. Sometimes it gets confusing. All right.
Yes, if you want to deny.
Right. Yes, if you...
Yes, if you wanted to deny. No, if you do not.
Correct. All right. All right. So that, um, application has been denied based on Mr. Andrews' motion. All right. All right. Thank you, Board. Um, moving on, our next case is tab number...
Sixteen.
Sixteen, sorry. Case number nineteen three forty-seven C, special use permit in site plan. The applicant is D.L. Rogers Corp. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Sean Dial, twenty eighty Highway one sixty-two Benton, Louisiana seven one zero zero six. Louisiana Realty and Associates is who I'm here from. And I represent D.L. Rogers, which is a Sonic franchise group. They have over two hundred and forty locations. They have an existing location around the corner with a desire to improve that at this location. Here to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. And you said your name is, last name is Dial?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dial. Any questions about the application? All right. None. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in op, in a, in favor of this application?
Yes, Bob Merrick.
I'm sorry?
You were asking for a favor.
Yes, in favor. Yes.
Bob Merrick, fifty-nine fourteen Fairfield Avenue, seven eleven oh six. Again, uh, very close to the same other project. That's where the barber shop application is. And this is, this is my, my building and parking lot and all. And this would be the property. I'm, uh, I'm in favor. I want to see the, uh, uh, site plan if I could, please. Yeah. Mitchell Lane is right here. And this is where all the residences are on this side of the street. Pretty much commercial, except for a couple of properties up this way. And this is Pyramid. And this is Thornhill. And, uh, the property, you come in and you've got your stacking lane for your drive-through here. And I applaud the designers for not having an access from Mitchell Lane. Uh, I wish I'd had some input in the, um, Home Federal building because they do have ex, uh, an exit here. And I know there's a gentleman that drives his motorcycle and has a residence right here. And I don't know what happens at two in the morning when somebody comes out from an ATM, but I'd sit in there headlight, go into his living room or bedroom. So I would like, you know, the planners to think in terms of neighborhoods when that's going to happen. That would have been a better design not to do that. But given this one, and I know, you know, curb cuts and all that on busy streets is an issue. But as you come out here on Thornhill, you're either going to go to Pyramid or you're going to circle back around. A lot of people take a right turn no matter what in life. They just keep taking right turns instead of trying to, uh, go left into oncoming traffic. So there may be, you know, new traffic up and down Mitchell, which is very much residential. Just a lot of little bungalows up and down there. And if you look at the, the other map that you just had, I mean, it, there's some commercial for sure. Uh, but all of this is R one seven around here. So, you know, it's, it's trying to stay a good, solid neighborhood. And it is a good neighborhood. And, uh, so I just wanted to, uh, be in favor of, but if there's another design that, that makes that not go on to Thornhill, but still works, I would encourage the, uh, staff and the designers to, to look at that. Because anytime you keep property off of, uh, off of Thornhill, I mean, off of, uh, Mitchell and a residential area, that makes it better. And things do change. That Capital One on Yuri Drive, when Line Avenue shut down, you have to park in the neighborhood in front of people's houses when it's a busy day. Because there's not, that Capital One, you know, is crazy over there. I'm, I'm almost going to move to another bank because of it. Home Federal might be a good one. But anyway, uh, you know, things change and, and that, that Mitchell Street's getting, uh, more and more activity with a barber shop on one end and a Sonic dumping out on the other and Home Federal as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Merrick. Any questions for him?
Just for the record, Madam Chair, you were talking about young planners?
Yes.
Bob Merrick is one of the old planners that flushes weights around Shreveport.
Not so old. All right. Thanks. Um, anyone else to speak in favor?
My name's Josh Emery. Address is four twenty Bridgewater Circle, Benton, Louisiana seven one zero zero six. And I work for D.L. Rogers, the franchisee that's looking to put the Sonic here. And just again, wanting to answer any concerns or questions that might come up from this group.
Y'all are going to maintain the other location on Line Avenue just south of...
No, this would be a replacement.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Isn't that, didn't the other location have a volleyball court or a...
So, yeah, Burt Coons will stay there. Yeah, so...
No, I'm talking about the one just south of like Sushi Gen.
Right, that one? Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, we actually, uh, I, I moved here ten years ago when our franchise group bought some of these stores in the area from the, uh, the, um, corporate, corporate level stores and, and adding the volleyball and playground there at Burt Coons is one of the, uh, one of the things we did, uh, when we came to the area.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Emery.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition?
Afternoon. I'm Ken Donnelly. I live nine thirty-one Mitchell Lane, Shreveport, Louisiana seven one one oh six. Problem I have with this putting the fast food, we already have on Mitchell Lane a nice garbage dump from McDonald's and from Big Circle K. Also lately, since they opened up the barbecue place, we have a lot coming through there and dumping out the garbage. I hate waking up in the morning to somebody's leftovers. That's one of the things. They had a fast food place planned on C one. If you look at the... On Pyramid, that was turned down about five years ago because it was bringing more traffic into Pyramid and causing problems. Since they put the mall in there and, and the what's name, we seem to have more accidents. And luckily, since they took down all the trees and brush, it sounds like it's in my living room. They did the landscaping job. I hear the ambulances. I hear all the crash. And I hear all the screeching as they're coming in and out of those properties. I said, I, I understand that they did the landscaping. That's fine. But now you're going to bring more traffic and more trash to me without nobody saying, oh, I'm going to take care of this. The bank is actually helping right now while they're trying to sell the property of keeping the, keeping the dirt out of the ditch. I said, I had spoke to them. They said they weren't going to put the back entrance onto Mitchell Lane, which they did anyhow after the plan was drawn up. I came during that time. I also came during the time the doctor made that many mall. And I said, and they worked with it so it didn't have traffic coming through. I said, they, now the children are growing up. But there were a lot of children on that block for a while, you know? And as, we're going to have more traffic with all the gun shootings and stuff like that. I already had a neighbor that was shot right next, on the front of his lawn, on that thing coming up from that corner for, off of Thornhill. I'm hoping that he's put that in consideration for the people that live there and for the traffic concerns. If you looked at the traffic study of how much is going on on Pyramid, there's been quite a few changes. You have Sprint over there. You have the bank. And you have the small mall. And you have the barbecue and Cuban liquors. How many accidents and stuff has been increased since there? I'd like you to take that into consideration if we will. Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Any questions? Uh, wait, just one moment. I'm sorry. Mr. Jackson has a question.
Um, Mitchell Lane, is that the address?
That's, yeah. Mitchell Lane is the center street. You have, uh,
Yeah. So...
Right, right behind, right where they're going into, off of Thornhill. According to that planning picture that you had up there, it's right, that's Mitchell Lane where they plan to go into there. Alongside there is a ditch that has all kinds of problems with, uh, garbage and stuff in it.
Oh, oh, which, which side is, is the ditch you referring to? The, the street names will be fine.
As they come out of McDonald's from each end, they drop all their trash on here. The barbecue place...
So let me ask you. Are you talking about, and I'm not looking at the map. You're looking, I'm looking at a, a physical visual map of the place. Sherwood Road is where they're coming?
No, no. Sherwood Road is another block down. Mitchell Lane is right there.
But I, I know, but you can't, you can't get from, you can't get from McDonald's to Mitchell Lane directly without coming down another street.
You actually have to come, let me, let me show you here. This is Pyramid, okay? This is Pyramid. This comes down Thornhill. This is, this is Mitchell Lane. It's not even marked on there.
No, I, I know. I'm looking at something totally different. I can see a better map than you have right there. What I'm saying to you is Mitchell Lane is between Pyramid and Sherwood. It's a middle street between.
Yeah, it's a middle street.
And it sits in between Fairfield and Thornhill, right?
Right.
It comes out on both Fairfield and Thornhill. That's the end of Mitchell Lane, both of those ends, right? So I guess my question is, how, how are they getting from McDonald's? There's a wall up on Thornhill, right?
I know, but they're coming down there to take a shortcut. They're coming, they're coming through off of Pyramid at nighttime, coming through, uh, Thornhill. And then making that turn to go back to Fairfield. There's a lot of construction and traffic going on in that area. So they've been using Thornhill as a shortcut rather than getting stuck on that single lane on Pyramid.
So what, are they trying to go back to Pyramid?
They're trying to get back to Fairfield to go back up the other way.
Looking to Fairfield, going back to Fairfield.
Yeah, they're going, they're going back. They're going down that way. Like, that's a shortcut. Now, sometimes during the middle of night, they're pulling to the bank parking lot and come through that exit.
So the bank has an exit out there? The bank has an exit onto Mitchell Lane?
Yeah, it has an exit on Mitchell Lane over there.
But this, but this Sonic will not?
No, Sonic's going out to Pyramid.
Got you.
But I'm saying you're having trouble with Pyramid's traffic as it is.
I, you hear, have more and more accidents going into Sprint, going into that small mall and going into the, the what's the name? That traffic is a two-lane thing. They made it wider for a while. But that's not encouraging, uh, better traffic zoning over there for that. Coming in or out of there is going to make a bigger problem on Pyramid.
So, so the question is, uh, I, I think what you're referring to is, um, road repairs?
Yeah, road repairs. Well, they, when they were building the, uh, the bank, they broke the, they never fixed the sewer system with the big trucks. They broke that. I brought that up.
That's what they're doing now.
Yeah, yeah. They never repaired that. Now, not only that, but going in from, going down Thornhill, if that traffic's built... Now, not only that, but going in from, going down Thornhill, if that traffic's built up inside Sonic's, they're gonna start coming down Mitchell Lane, just to get around and get away from it. Just like they go when they go on Pyramid and they go down the Line Avenue trying to get McDonald's. If that's blocked up, they're all going around and around, they're coming around to, uh, Thornhill and stuff.
Sure, I guess, well, my, the reason I'm asking these questions is because I assume that the work that's going on on Pyramid is temporary.
Yeah.
And that at some point it's gonna open up, which would mitigate against the shortcuts, um, that, that seem to be the issue. I just didn't, I was trying to really understand from the beginning where the barbecue place, it was the McDonald's, McDonald's and somewhere else.
Barbecue place is on Fairfield.
No, no, I know, I'm, I was trying to see how they get garbage in your, on Mitchell Lane, given where Mitchell Lane is from Pyramid.
Garbage isn't stationary anymore. People have windows. And if you look at the people towards the night, that's why I said they have the new thing about littering. But if you get the license plate, who do you call up to stop it? You can't stop it once it's hit the street.
So, but in other words.
That's what I'm saying.
Not putting the Sonic there won't stop that anyway.
No, but it doesn't mean that it won't add to it.
Gotcha.
It doesn't mean that it won't add to it and stuff like.
I see your concern.
And the congestion will pick back up when the street's repaired on Pyramid cause it hasn't cleared up at all lately, even though they tried to make it better.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Thank you.
If, if you would, uh, Mr. Jean worked closely with, uh, Dr. Erlin, uh, the traffic engineer for the city of Shreveport on this project. And he could share some light to, um, the, uh, information supplied by traffic engineering and the traffic coming on Pyramid.
Okay, and, and on to Mitchell, cause it does look like there was a, y'all are asking them not to have access through the bank parking lot.
And he could share that with you also about that blockage.
Okay.
When, when the, um, Mitchell Lane, uh, issue was discussed with the bank, because of the volume of traffic, that, that driveway was, was allowed by the city engineer's office. When, uh, the discussion of a higher, more intense use was discussed, then, uh, Dr. Erlin, the traffic engineer, was brought in with a discussion. He actually visited the site, uh, and observed the traffic during peak, uh, traffic periods and did, uh, noticed different gaps in the, in the, uh, traffic flow, which he felt that would be, uh, adequate enough to allow for full access to happen in and out of the facility. He further said that, um, the condition that, that is in existence now at Thornhill was about the same as what the new driveway would be. So he was in favor of allowing the, the new driveway, uh, on to, um, Pyramid. But all of us were concerned about reducing high volumes of traffic directly out of the site, uh, onto Mitchell Lane. And so the, uh, the applicant agreed, uh, not to have a connection with that higher volume of traffic on the Mitchell.
Doesn't the, is, doesn't the site plan show a curb cut onto Pyramid?
Yes. That's what I was saying, he allowed.
It is allowing it, oh, I'm sorry.
He is allowing.
I thought you were saying it was not.
No, he's allowing it.
But not on to Mitchell.
But not on to Mitchell.
But not, gotcha, okay.
Yes. But there was, uh, the, the applicant met with, uh, members of the city engineer department, uh, and, uh, Mr. Erlin, and thoroughly discussed this issue, uh, and before the, uh, recommendation for approval, uh, from staff came forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jean. Okay, good. All right, um, is there anyone else here to speak in opposition?
My name is Hardy Yates. I live at 901 Mitchell Lane, on a corner of Mitchell and Thornhill. Uh, I came down here to talk about the entrance into Mitchell, but I didn't see the site plan before I got here. But now I see the site plan and I, and not, I'm for what this says on the site plan. I'm not gonna try to stop the Sonic. It's gonna probably be a done deal anyway. Something's gonna go in there that's, whether I have offended, which offend me or not, so I might as well accept that. But I did not want something coming off into Mitchell. Mitchell is an, just a two-lane road. As Breszyncze said, that, that people park there, residents park there. Uh, the garbage trucks have trouble coming up and down that street as it is. And all this new traffic that we've been getting lately has been happening, causing a lot of problems. My question is whether a traffic, um, um, control study had been thought about, had been done for Thornhill. Since that, all the, uh, construction stuff's going on, they've been coming down Thornhill and it's a speedway. And they, they posted signs at, I think, twenty-five miles an hour, but nobody pays any attention to it. And for two blocks there, they, up to four, five, fifty miles an hour before they can get down to a stop sign. And, uh, we have grandkids, uh, on that road. And, uh, I just hate to think that might, one of them might get out in the road and, while somebody comes along there. But, uh, I was just wondering if the site plan, I mean, your traffic, uh, could be, um, program can be done to take, I take, uh, see if that, I know that when Thornhill rains real bad, it floods down here between Mitchell and Pyramid. So I'm hoping that if they, they're gonna redo that street down in there some way so that, uh, or they're gonna have problems. And another thing I'd like to say is about the, their garbage dump. They normally put their garbage dump at the end of the lot. That would be right, just a few feet really from my doorstep. And I would not like to walk out there and smell the garbage and stuff. That's all I have to say.
Um, thank you, Mr. Yates. Any questions? Um... Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? Okay, um, Mr. Emery, would you care to come back, um, to rebut the opposition?
I don't have anything else I feel like I need to add at this point. We've been working on this project for over a year, trying to make sure it's right before we came forward to the city council, so. Um, unless any of the concerns raised, have, have raised new questions for you guys from me, um, I don't have anything else to say.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Board, what is your question?
What's the staff recommendation? I'm sorry. My motion is to approve based on the staff recommendation.
With the stipes?
With the stipulation.
All right, motion by Mr. Andrews to approve based on the staff recommendation with stipulations. And second by Mr. Jackson. Any discussion? Call for the vote. The application is approved. All right, thank you. Next case, tab number seventeen, um, case number nineteen, three oh four SC preliminary and final plat. The applicant is Sinclair Law Firm, LLC. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Timothy Larkin, and, uh, I am managing member of Larkin Development at Railsback. And Larkin Development Railsback is the developer of the Esplanade Neighborhood Land Unit Development. Addressed at Post Office drawer fifty-eight twenty, Bossier City, uh, seven eleven seventy-one. We're here today with actually two applications, uh, that have to do with, uh, preliminary and final plat. Before I go to this first one, I would suggest, unless there's objection or reason otherwise, that we just take the two cases together, uh, unless you think that you would rather not do that.
I don't.
He needs to do it separately.
I think they're, I think just under the rules of order and under, I think, I think separately, but we will, we will keep everything in mind.
Certainly do that, I, I understand that, that's why I asked, we're good.
Thank you.
So, the, um, plat that we're dealing with here now, I believe, is, or the first one would be, uh, Esplanade Unit Six Eight. And I, if I understood the, uh, the, um, staff report that, um, was sent out on it, that the, generally speaking, the, the, uh, the plat and the, um, application that we've made is, is in substantial, uh, compliance with the, um, original master plan and the neighborhood development that we had before you. So, uh, so I'm, 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 I guess I'm going into this thinking that the expectations that we have brought here with this plat are ones that we created when we did our initial, uh, master plan. And, um, looking back at that particular, uh, event, uh, the development rights for this development, Esplanade, were obtained approximately, uh, twelve years ago. Uh, and at that time, we presented to this commission our plan to execute the development in six phases. And, uh, since that time, twelve years ago, we have, uh, successfully, uh, developed and executed the first five. And in the year, uh, twenty fourteen, uh, we brought forth this, this sixth phase of development for your consideration. When we did entitle the, uh, development and, uh, obtained the rights to do this, there were literally millions of dollars of, uh, conditions, of stipulations that were, uh, placed, uh, as a condition of, of doing these, these, these six phases. And, uh, it was, uh, a little unusual in that the stipulations required that the, all of the improvements, the millions in dollars of, of improvements be done before, um, any of the phases of development could, could be used. And so it was a, um, a very unusual, uh, extraordinary. And, um, uh, in addition to the, these stipulations that we had, we also, um, in our, uh, application to the city to come in the city limits and to utilize the city services, the city, uh, also made requirements that we, um, do certain, uh, development improvements, again, prior to actually using these six phases. The, those included, um, utilizing the city water and the city services, um, and building them so that they were adequate to accommodate additional development around Esplanade. And also at that time, uh, the city required us to, uh, link, uh, a water line between Floneloukas Road and, and Elleby Road, uh, oversize it. And it was designed to resolve a, a rural crisis at the time with the Elleby Road Estates because of the water system they had. It was, you turn on the water, hardly come out, and when it did, it was rusty colored. So, um, this was an opportunity for, while we were developing, to fix this problem. We, we did that. It was a requirement. Uh, to satisfy the requirements of the MPC and, uh, the city, we then, uh, had to follow, uh, specifications that were, uh, created by both bodies. The water, the water system, uh, to serve, uh, all six phases, uh, was a, was a requirement, including a requirement by the city to relieve the water quality issues. The sewer system, uh, was required to be built in advance to serve all six phases, uh, including, uh, additional design capacity for future city growth in the nearby areas. Uh, a, a two-hundred-foot highway class bridge to route the vehicles from the six phases of, uh, the neighborhood to Floneloukas Road with additional capacity and privileges, uh, for the adjoining neighborhood. A sixty-two-hundred-foot-long boulevard, uh, connecting Railsback Road and Floneloukas Road to route vehicles from the six phases to Floneloukas Road. An extensive storm drain system, and then actually a community lake, um, again, uh, up front, but done to, with the capacity and adequate to serve all six phases. And then, um, uh, that a sidewalk system, pedestrian pathways, uh, parks, common areas, um, that we, um, presented. And, uh, again, uh, were, were to be a part of this neighborhood. And so, um, we completed all of those things successfully. And then we were turned loose to do our development, and we did our first five phases and everything went well. And, uh, to date, we've expended, uh, made, in the neighborhood of fifteen million dollars on the improvements. And, uh, and the unit that you have before you, which is Unit Six, to date, we have expended, um, four million dollars, uh, in, in all of these things that we did as we, uh, did those first five units. So these expenditures have been done on the Unit Six that we have before you. And the, uh, the unit contains actually seventy-five lots, which I'll show you in, in just a minute. And, uh, when we, when we, uh, completed all of these things, we have a written approval from the MPC that we completed all those things. The city notified Larkin Development that we had satisfied all the requirements for the things that we did. And then in the spring of twenty fourteen, after we built all of the water and sewer facilities, you're actually required to donate those to the city. And they're three point three million dollars worth of facilities. So we, we fulfilled every single thing with that. And, um, and when we brought in the spring of twenty fourteen, the application for this sixth phase, it had, um, the property that we're here before, that we're, that we're looking at today. It, it, it was included in that application in twenty fourteen. You may remember that, um, that at, at that time, uh, the, we were about into the third year, I think, of, uh, of a study that was entertaining the, uh, the thought of having a extension of Highway, uh, thirty-one, thirty-two to intersect, uh, and link the future I sixty-nine. And, and that study, uh, one of the routes that that study had was, uh... Okay, yeah, you know, I, I'm sorry, I had, uh, seen that the time here is coming up and I actually had, uh, I thought that the, the two, uh, together would, uh, I would do the two together and I would cover all this. So I guess I'm, I'm gonna run out of time, I'm not sure how you're gonna do that. Perhaps I could, uh, request, uh, so I can finish this, that I, uh, utilize the presentation for the next one now and...
Would anyone like, would that be by motion?
I'd make that motion.
Good, good.
Extend his time, allow him to pair, pair the time with the other, even though we're not necessarily gonna be considering the two together.
Very good, thank, thank you very much.
A second? All in favor?
So at that time, we brought that, uh, application, uh, for Unit Six. And, um, this body, um, looked at the, um, I think at that time, it was just gonna be a few months till the study for thirty-one, thirty-two was over in September. September or some such. The, based on that, this body recommended that the, the plat be, the entire plat for Unit 6 be denied. We took that to the city council, and, and, well, excuse me, let me, let me run back just a little bit. Right prior to that meeting in 2014, we were asked if we would consider removing these two parts of Unit 6. And actually, when we made the presentation, we offered to do that, but that was denied as well. We took that, that denial and, to the city, again, removing these, these lots. And the city council chose to approve the, the portion that did not have these lots, the, the modification. And this allowed us to, to make planning headway, and presumably, the study was about to be finished up. And we had a contingent plan. One contingent plan was to add back these lots and press on with the approval in the case where another path or a no-build option was chosen. Or, in the case of a decision that a route and a alignment was approved through Esplanade, then we could respond with a revision and a replat of the Unit 6 in accordance with the study. So, it seemed to accommodate everybody's wishes there. Unfortunately, of course, nothing is, nothing panned out. It did, did, nothing happened in September, or actually, nothing has hap... There has not been a decision over the last five years. Many times over those years, NLCOG reported that there was hope, and the study was maybe just around the corner, it was looking good. Based on that, we made application last year. Again, the MPC had a report at the time that the study was just, just a few minutes away from being finished. And, so it's somewhat ironic today that the same prediction that has occurred over and over again over the last eight years is still right here before us. Five years later, the staff report still leads you to believe that a final decision is just weeks away. All that notwithstanding, the reason I'm here today is to request that you, that you discontinue holding this property for the highway. We've been denied the use of this property for, for five full years. And here are the reasons why. I hope that this is the time that you'll say, "Well, good, everything notwithstanding, looking at everything, it's time, time to move." Number one, our planning and engineering now require that we get in hand an approval so that we can include this in our facility's design with the Unit 6. Right now, they're, they're hamstrung. They, they, they can't make a plan with, with the part that is, remains unfinished and remains in question. How to make a drainage plan, how many lots they're going to serve with water and sewer, how do they configure utility easements? Is the gas going to a house or under an interstate highway? Or what, what is, what's going to happen with, with the plant? So, they can't do that. They're waiting for somebody to say, "We is, or we ain't, or we're on, we're off," whatever. So, number two, really important. The cost of carrying the incomplete part of the development is, is enormous. It's an incredible burden, and an unreasonable one. We no longer have the capacity to hold it. The capital cost alone is in excess of $17,000 a month, and it's been 60 months now. Number three, we've reached an agreement with a buyer for these properties. The lots have a value of more than $2,600,000, and it is critical that we successfully conclude this sale, frankly, to salvage this development after 60 months. Important. Reason number four, the plat contains Forbing Ridge Road, which is an access to private property adjoining us. The buyer of that, the owner of that, has been waiting five years for somebody to decide something, and it, and it's undecided. Number five, lots 3,000, 3,001, 3,002, and 3,003 are all recreation and conservation areas to be conveyed to the homeowners association for their use in accordance with the PUD document that we created when we were here 12 years ago, that we are, we created an expectation with them that we're going to do all that, and, and they're waiting. And some of them are here, and, and they want to know the answer. So, some constantly asked about it. My answer is always, "I don't know." And that's been for five years, and that, that's not a very good answer. It's not reasonable for me to have only that answer. So, I don't think it's going to wait anymore, and so I hope that you'll take that seriously. Number six, the entry building and the security that's associated with this sixth phase of development has been sitting and waiting for utilities and completion, again, for five years. Sitting there, doing nothing. Are we, are we going to have it? Are we going to have the utilities? Or are we not going to have the utilities? The homeowners want to know when things will conclude. Most important, number eight, the development expenses for this property incurred were incurred to satisfy your stipulations and requirements, and they can only be repaid from revenue generated by the sale of these properties. The total appraised value of these properties in Unit 6 is $7,500,000. So, these are, these are huge numbers, certainly huge numbers for a loan, for a small business. They're big numbers even, even for a city. So, in closing, let me say that after five years denying these plats will produce financial losses that Larkin Development Railsback does not have the capacity to bear. I know you, you may not care about that, or you may not supposed to care about that, but this thing has grown now to numbers that are big enough to where, at least what we both should care about is, is the, the financial consequences for the city's report. So, I hope you'll take those things into consideration, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have about things.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Larkin. Any questions? Mr. Joseph?
Good afternoon, Mr. Larkin. Educate me a bit on this. I know it seems like it's out there in the public domain, and I probably should know a bit more about it than I do, but I, it seems like you're going to be the person to help me out here. So, when you purchased this land, at the time, was there any plan for the highway to come through?
No.
Zero plan?
No.
All right. And so you purchased it in good faith, intending to develop it as you're developing it, or as you proposed to develop it at this point?
Correct.
Are you aware of, are you in the loop sufficiently enough to know whether or not the funding? I, I'm aware that there was $100 million recently from the BP oil spill that our state legislature, in its infinite wisdom, decided to move from reconstruction efforts at the Jimmer Davis Bridge to, to, to this area. Are you aware of any necessary funding that's going to complete this, aside from that $100 million?
I see Mr. Rogers is here from NLCOG, and, and those, some of those questions are going to be ones that, that he's going to be particularly an authority on.
Okay.
But, but we pay very close attention to it, and it looks like that the first time that there would be money for this project, if they choose this route...
Right.
If they decide to do it...
It's a bunch of moving parts.
And they do build it, then the, I believe that I'm correct that the first time funds are available are in the year 2040 or 20, in, around 2040.
And at that time, your losses would be what?
Pardon me?
And by that time, your losses would be what?
Oh, it won't matter. I'll be gone.
Right. That's kind of what I'm getting at. All right.
The, there's a, there is a, there is a, just, just a, an aside to, to your questions. There is a, there is a clinging hope by certain, by some that, that, that this, you know, that, that once they get through all of the processes, that, you know, that this, that this will be affordable. But, if, if we get to a point that, that they do decide something on this, then, then for Larkin Development and for Esplanade, that's a, that's only a clearance of a very small part of what then begins to be, you know, "Well, now we've got to go find the money." And then, and then, that, that doesn't, that doesn't mean they're going to say, "All right, we've got a deal, and we're going to buy the land." It, it just means that, that we have passed the thing that we've been after for eight years. And, and you, you can, you can certainly see that I, I think that, that, that we have been... I just think we've been fair and, 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 you know, enough's enough. So, hope you, hope you'll agree with that and come to the conclusion that, that, that we need to move on. We, we just very, we must.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Questions? Um, Mr. Larkin, I mean, are you, you're familiar with the thoroughfare plan that's been placed, that's been approved by the city council?
I'm sorry, I...
The thoroughfare plan that we have in place here that's been approved by the city council and, or enacted?
I'm, I'm very aware of, we actually, one of the reasons I'm aware of it is because the NLCOG actually brought the thoroughfare plan over to the Bossier City Council for, for an in-depth question-and-answer session that we had. And as, as a result of objections that we happened to have for the, for the way it was conducted, that we decided not to adopt it. And I understood that they were, when they left our meeting, that, that's the last I've heard of it, that, that it was going, they were going to go back and begin to look at other ways of adopting it. Are, are you...
I believe, Mr. Larkin, this is a Cato, Shreveport Cato, part of our master plan?
No, it's a regional.
Okay, so...
It's regional.
But we, but it was ultimately approved, correct?
Yes.
So, it is something that is, that is a, that we are bound by it to some extent. I mean, I, as far as I understand it.
When you have, when you have a moment, this is why I've asked Mr. Rogers to remain. He can come up and answer any questions that are applicable to NLCOG.
Okay, and so, in keeping with the thoroughfare plan, if, if that's something that, that gives us direction, and if, as NLCOG has, is projecting, a right-of-way is secured within the next six to 12 months, then what position would we all be in then? That puts us through those particular, just that particular portion of the property?
Well...
What would you do, in other words, if the right-of-way is in fact secured as projected?
Well, just, this is, you know, I'm on, I'm on 34 years of doing this. The only developments I've ever done are, are planned unit developments. And they're not piece at a time, they're, they're integral ones.
Right.
I, I have, I've done the entitlements on a lot of subdivisions, 10,000 acres in the state of Georgia. I'm very familiar with all of these processes. A very typical and normal process in the establishment, for instance, of a thoroughfare plan, is the, the purpose of the study that prepares the thoroughfare plan for use is first and foremost to go and find where that plan, how that plan impacts plans that are in place. So, I'm, I'm sure that there must have been a process by which the, the people that studied that thoroughfare plan came to you and said, "Look, do you all have any obligations or, or things in place that, that are already there that, that you have an obligation to do?" And, and I'm quite sure on a, on a legitimate thoroughfare plan adopted by the, you know, the, by the area, that owners would have been at, in, in, in conversations and in consultation with the, the land study. So that when you ask the question that you do, where you see that there's a conflict, the creators of that plan had taken that into account. And as a matter of fact, when they brought it to Bossier City, the, one of the reasons that we rejected it is because we, we asked, is, is part of the thoroughfare plan to notify owners who will have lines drawn across their property. Because the thoroughfare plan that, that they had first connoted that you, you might have the right to take somebody's property with that plan. And, and, and first of all, what you want to know is, you want to get everybody advised of what's going on and develop a plan where everybody's aware of it, and it's, and it's, it's embraced and adopted by, by the, both cities and the councils in, in the, in the way that they had set out to do it. So, so my answer to your question is, is, is if, if you're saying with our entitlements in place and everything, everything done, and here comes some new ideas or some new plans, there, there may be others, you know?
Well, what I'm really just asking is, if the studies are, have been done, the appropriate study's done, the right-of-way is procured. If that, if we get to that point, which is projected, it's not guaranteed, but I'm, my understanding is it's, it's projected that we're going to get that right-of-way within the next six to 12 months or something. Where, where are we going to be with you on that? What will you do if there's a right-of-way procured across your property? What, what would these homeowners do if we subdivided? Who's going to pay for this land that would probably need to be purchased by the taxpayers?
Who would, what, you mean, you're, you're, so you're, you're talking about in a case where the land, instead of being used for the purpose that we have set forth now, is, is used for a roadway?
Correct. Like, you know, I mean, these are always going to be issues when you're building major roadways. It takes forever. We're watching this in lots of locations right now. Property is affected. I mean, this is...
Right. Well, it's, it's, it's so simple. I mean, it's, it's just so simple. You know, the, the, the city has the right, they have the right to expropriate the land.
But...
It doesn't matter what you say here. If you pass this or don't pass it.
Right, but they can't just take it. They have to pay for it, correct?
Well, you sure?
Right. So, it's based on the...
I hope so.
Right.
I don't think, I don't think you can take anybody's land anywhere.
Exactly. So, it'd be based on the fair market value at the time? Would that be fair to say?
I, it, it's based on a set of rules that they take people's property from, and, and certainly, one of the precepts is, is fair market value, yes.
Yes, and so, as the representative of the community up here, because we're just community members, you know, our neighbors and our community member would be purchasing lots that are at risk for being in this right-of-way. And that's just troubling, that's concerning. I don't know if that's a risk we would want to take. Our staff is not recommending we take that risk. So, I'm just saying.
That, that's been the, you, you've had that position for eight years now, and, and we've left here many times with just a few months. And I, and I, that's, that's a position...
Well, the position is shifting with each, with each year because the reports coming back from NLCOG and the progress made toward the right-of-way is progressing. It's actually going in that direction, is my understanding. We cannot get here for... It's actually going in that direction, is my understanding. We can, I guess, hear from Mr. Rogers about this in a minute. But, you know, a year ago, we weren't in this exact same position, so, would you agree?
I sure was, you know.
And I know this is-
And the year before and all the before that.
Troubling and this has been exhausting.
Yeah, yeah.
And expensive.
By the way, uh, the, the problem with this is, is not, is not, you know, you're gonna do the, uh, is not the highway, you know, or, or a problem, you know. It, here, here's the problem, i- is, is, Mr. Larkin, uh, even though you have the right to do, do all this, we don't want you to do it because we don't save this land for that highway. And-
Do you, do you have an inherent right to subdivide? Is that your belief? I mean, is that your opinion?
A, a, a right to finish this, this PUD?
Or to, to subdivide property? Do you have, is, because that's probably a legal question, and I'm not saying I know the answer to that. I'm just saying it's your opinion that you have that right?
Well-
Without, that you should have that right without approval?
Well, once you gave it to me, I think I do have it, yes.
Once we gave-
Once, we, you know, we-
Is that why we're here today?
Twelve years ago, we got that right, and so, uh, and, and, and I think your staff said that what we're doing is carrying out exactly what we set forth. As a matter of fact, you said, well, you know, before we can give you that right, we need you to spend twelve, fifteen million bucks, and I went and did that, you know. And, and then in the meantime, what happened is, is you had some good ideas. You said, well, you know, I know you spent the twelve, fifteen million dollars, and, you know, you sure, you got four million dollars over here on this land, but, you know, we gotta think about the people. We gotta think about, you know, we might wanna put a road through there. It's a good idea. Well, those, those are okay.
But the majority of your property's already subdivided.
We did subdivide.
Is that, is that correct?
Pardon me, I'm sorry?
Your, your, some of your property has, we did approve some subdivisions in your property.
That's correct.
Okay.
Good.
How many, how many, what percentage of your property has already been approved for subdivision? About, like, seventy-five percent?
Well, approximately seventy-five percent, yes. And, and, um-
So those are the stipulations for those subdivisions?
And, uh, it, it's just so important that you understand that, you know, when, when, when you, when we were getting the entitlements for the other twenty-five percent, that we were required to spend, expend, uh, large sums in order to get the entitlements to do that. And, and after we did all that, which we have done now, and it's now time to use it, we've spent the money, and it's invested over there, and, 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 and you're, you, you're saying, well, actually, we didn't really mean that, you know, we, we, we didn't really want you to do that. Or, or we're not gonna let you do it, however you wanna say it.
I don't think I was around at that time.
I'm putting words in your mouth, but I, you know, so, yeah.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, to that point, I think Stephen Allen and I were, were here. We've been here a long time. And like you said, you've got a lot of money invested, but you had a goal too, is to develop some property, eighty acres, okay? At one time, the city was gonna sell you that trapezoid right there where the exchange was at, and you were gonna use part of that. Now, that fell through. Right, whether thirty-one, thirty, well, anyway, it doesn't matter.
Yes.
It's just politics and it's been twelve years ago. So, uh, the, the point of it is, you built a bridge to get to it because the citizens on Railsback and the study at the traffic light said that they couldn't all come out of that traffic light on Elbin Railsback. So the bridge was built to get out to Florida Lucas. So there has been some things done, and you've expended money to get that subdivision built like others have done. So it's now up to a stage, and Kent will talk, that there is a thoroughfare study, and I know what you said, Bozier didn't approve all of it, but there is a thoroughfare study for Cato Parish, Shreveport, Northwest Louisiana, to what's best, inner-city I forty-nine, I sixty-nine, thirty-one, thirty-two. There's only a limited source of money that the state and the federal government has, okay? So I don't think this is a city highway. I'm not a road engineer. Kent, Kent's got that. But I think this is a state highway. Uh, at some time, maybe not in our lifetime, it'll probably be built. Don't know when, if it's two years, or if it's ten years. But what we were trying to say on the MPC, and what our chairman's trying to say, chairperson, is that for the betterment of the citizens that live in your subdivision and the whole Cato Parish, and I'm getting to the punchline, I guess, as an engineer, if we know it's gonna be a road at some time, don't build in the middle of the road. That's what we're trying to say. You're saying, as a developer, it's my land until they determine it's gonna be a road. The need, the necessity, the environmental, uh, you can't stop me from building. I, I get it. But I'm not a lawyer. I, I don't know how that's gonna end up in the court system. But basically, it's kind of like the chicken and the egg. Do we build a house and tear it down to build a road? Or do we say, no, we're gonna buy the right-of-way, don't build a house? So that's kind of where we're at. We've got the staff approval. You've made your presentation. I think unless we have other people that wanna talk in for and against, you know, we, we need to move forward to get to where we need to be.
Let me, let me just, I do wanna make, first of all, I, there is, there is, uh, I, I don't, that reference to the city and the triangle and all that, this, I don't know what that is, and I have nothing to do with it and never, that's just a, that's just a mistake.
The city still owns that land.
Yeah, so, and, and we never, 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 never even approached them or talked about buying it or anything. But, but here is, uh, here is the thing, that it's just so easy here. You all, uh, we have a plan, and it's approved, and, and we, we need to do it. And the reason we need to do it is because we spent money, that we understood that when we spent the money, we're gonna do it, so. What you all are saying back to me is, well, we can't let you do that because we want it for the road. Well, let me tell you how you get fix all this, is, is, is take it. Just take it. To- tomorrow, if, if you would, uh, this thing, this thing, again, it's costing us seventeen thousand dollars a month to sit on it, so tomorrow, if what you would do, if you'd just, if you'd just say, well, look, uh, we're, we're not maybe anymore, and, and I know that we're, we, we cost you a million dollars and, and, and we hope to get that back somehow, but, but we'll take it, you know, and we, we've made our decision. And, and then you see what that would do is, that would say, all right, well, that, here it is, exactly. And then the first thing we'd do is, is, you know, make a deal to sell the land, get it out of there, and, and then there'd be something left, and, and then what's left, we could very easily replan.
So can y'all do that?
Yeah, pardon me?
Can y'all move forward in, with that plan, waiting until the presumption is that that land is probably gonna be needed?
Well, it's, it's just as soon as, as soon as somebody says that, that they're taking the land and, and buys it, we could sure do that, of course. Yeah, that, that would be the greatest thing, you know. Makes so much sense, you know, so. So anyway, until then, um, the, the, all of these expenditures that have, again, that I've talked about here are ongoing, and we're burying them, and they're, so, you know, if you kind of look at it from our standpoint, I guess if we're not able to use the land, what we're doing is, we're sitting here storing the land, saving it for the city at our expense, at the seventeen thousand dollars a month, after having done all of the things that we were stipulated to do by this group and through the ordinance. And so, that, that, that just makes no sense to us at all.
We do want the remainder of the land to move forward and be, um, an attractive, beautiful neighborhood like all of your others are for Shreveport citizens, and I hope that you can get that going soon and that this disputed little section of the land can, we can resolve this, or at least you can get to a point where you're comfortable saying, I predict this is what's gonna happen. I'm gonna move forward with my alternative plan with the rest of your land, which was, which is subdivided appropriately.
Yes.
Yes.
These numbers, seven and a half million, four million, these are, these are not just little things to us, of course, but that sounds like they are to you all and I, but they're, it's big business to us.
I won't go that far, but again, my, my question is, when you purchased the land, were you aware of any plans to bring the interstate that way, or the highway that way?
The, the, you can ask Mr. Rogers when the study started.
Okay.
But we, we had, we had all of the entitlements done, that, and, and we had, and we had a, and we were underway with the construction. And, um, and, and then a, a, uh, there, there-
There were rumors.
Just an uproar began in the, in the community, and it started, it started in the community by finding out that, that, that the right-of-way or the, the, well, I guess it was a right-of-way that went through the neighboring, uh, community was no longer there, so.
Thank you very much.
So. Good?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who care to speak in favor of this proposal? Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Scott Sinclair, PO Box one zero two six, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven six three. I, I do have one question, if I could get some clarification. It's my appreciation that because this is a part of a PUD and part of a PUD application, that this body is a recommending body under section fourteen point two and not the deciding body? Is that-
Correct.
That is correct.
Is that, okay.
Absolutely correct.
Thank you. Um, I apologize for my confusion about that.
That's not correct.
A recommending body?
No, not on this.
Not on this, it's this.
No. You're not a recommending body.
Okay, just wanted to be clear about that. Uh, Mr. Larkin talked about the impact of the decision-making process on his own business, but you need to understand that it's impacting people other than him. Banks make loans based on expectations about this process. When a PUD is created, that, that, that approves the entire neighborhood, all six phases. Not the first unit, not the second unit, the whole thing. And so banks lend money to allow developers like this to spend the money that is required for all of the infrastructure, to put it all in place before you can start selling lots. And banks rely on the revenue from this last unit to pay those loans. Well, there's four million dollars worth, there's four million dollars worth of expenses on this unit, and there's four million dollars worth of outstanding loans on this unit that have not been repaid. And there is no source of repayment for those because of the decisions of this body. And so you need to understand that your decisions are having an impact on the local banking communicate, community as well as Mr. Larkin. The same thing is true with respect to homeowners. When you approve a PUD, you improve a neigh- a neighborhood. And so representations are made to homeowners and lot buyers when they buy lots and they decide to build homes, and when others come in and buy homes, they're doing that based on an expectation about what this entire neighborhood is gonna look like and, and, and be like at the end of the day. And so when they ask those questions, you can, with confidence, say, yeah, there's gonna be homes here, and it's gonna look like this over here because I have my PUD approved. And that decision has already been made, and was made twelve years ago. And so the expectations that have been set up for these people, including, uh, what the rest of the development is gonna look like in terms of what the, uh, the park on the, on Bayou Pierre is going to look like, all, all of those things are being impacted by your decisions, and their expectations are not being met because of your decisions. One of the things that you, I appreciate and I understand that the thoroughfare plan was approved last December by the city council. But you need to understand that that thoroughfare plan was approved with a, with a resolution that says it does not supersede what's already in the books. It does not modify, uh, what has already been approved. It, it does not undo what this body has already done. It's specific, it says that specifically, if you go back and read the resolution. So that thoroughfare plan does not undo the obligations that this body took on when it approved the PUD. So I appreciate the obligation with respect to the thoroughfare plan, but nobody wants to address the obligation that was made to Mr. Larkin and the obligation that was made to his bank and the obligation that was made to the homeowners. And so that's what we're asking you to reconsider. Any questions with me? Thank you.
Thanks. Is anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone to speak?
Madam Chair, would you like any information from Mr. Rogers? He's still here.
Should we do that now, at this time, or should we allow someone to speak in opposition, or?
Go right ahead. I'm just alerting you that he's here.
Thank you, yes. Is anyone here to speak in opposition? Um, all right, I would, I would like to invite Mr. Rogers up to the podium to provide additional information.
Kent Rogers, Executive Director, Northwest Louisiana Council of Governments, better known as NLCOG, six two five Texas Street, Suite two hundred, Shreveport, Louisiana. Questions?
All right, mine is a simple one. I'm a very linear in the way I think. And so I need to know, uh, you heard the question that I asked Mr. Larkin on a couple of different occasions. Do, are you aware of whether or not, when he purchased the property, whether or not there were any, that he, if he did so with any knowledge that there might be this thoroughfare coming through?
Uh, I, I can't speak to his knowledge. That's-
Okay, let's see. When did you purchase the property? Can I ask him when he purchased the property?
Two thousand seven.
Two thousand seven? So do you know, as it relates to two thousand seven?
Uh, as early as, um, and I had to look it up just a few minutes ago. Um, as early as nineteen ninety-two, there was a compatibility study that was done in terms of the interloop extension and I, it was called the interloop extension, uh, I sixty-nine compatibility study that looked at, um, the best way to do those two projects somewhat together, um, because the original idea with, was, you know, with the interloop, was to extend it all around, all the way around the backside of the base and whatnot. I sixty-nine came to light with some of that same corridor. So that study was done to look at how those two could work together, not necessarily duplicate each other.
And what, if you may, uh, what sort of conclusions were derived from that study?
Uh, it had a broad brush.
You're right.
Again, you know, at the, at that level of study, it's a, it's a big magic marker line that goes, type of thing.
Like, where would we put it?
Went somewhat through some of that property, yes. But again, that's a big magic marker line at that.
And what source of study is after nineteen ninety-two?
Um, we have undertaken, uh, well, the state of Louisiana undertook what's called a state zero feasibility study. Um, that was completed several years back. We have entered into what's-
Proudy oh seven?
Uh, I don't recall the exact dates. I, I couldn't say. Um, we have since gone into the, uh, stage one in the formal NEPA process, environmental study. Um, we are inches away from the end of that. Uh, we literally, the, uh, my staff, uh, the consultant staff, Federal Highway staff and DOTD staff literally sat down and went page by page through that final draft , um, to make sure we address Federal Highway's comments appropriately. Um, they should have those comments finished and back to Federal Highways by the end of this month. Um, we anticipate thirty to forty-five days for their review of that document.
Yes, sir.
At that point, we can do the advertisement for a public hearing. Um, there's a thirty-day, it's a, it's a total of forty-five days for public comment. Thirty days into that is the earliest we can do, um, the public hearing on it, and then ten days following that.
Okay, and the question I asked you earlier involved the actual funding of this project. As I appreciated, we got a hundred million dollars, and then there was some, um, in, some monies that you were referencing, um-
The hundred ma- the hundred million dollars that was appropriated at the state level just recently is actually for the I forty-nine inner-city project.
Right.
And that comes from BP oil spill money.
And the potential funding for this area where his property is, what insight do we have on that?
It would, it would likely be federal funds with some, some sort of local match. That local match can come from, uh, city, the parish, state, uh, it being a state highway that would likely be state funding.
Any potential timeline on that, as we sit here today?
We cannot do any of that until we have the environmental clearance.
Um, who, how are all of these studies that have been going on for this project over time? How have those been funded?
Uh, the initial portion of it was funded through the, the state zero feasibility was done. Um, the state has a, a retainer contract, um, with a few firms to do state zero studies. What pot of money they pull that retainer contract out of, I don't know.
But it's state tax money? Would it be state tax money, a combination of city?
Uh, they probably, it was probably a combination of state and fed. Um, the stage one, the environmental process that we've been going through is all, um, it's a, it's what's called STP greater than two hundred K funds. It's attributable funds that come to our area, federal monies, um, with a match support. That match support- um, with a match support. That match support has been coming from the state.
So do you have any idea how much all of these studies have cost the taxpayers?
I'd have to go look it up, but I want to say we're roughly in the two million dollar range.
So that investment has been made by our taxpayers two days?
Correct. And we've also had a little over a quarter of a million dollars from my agency alone in legal fees.
Okay.
Not because of them, but because of other parties.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Uh, Mr. Clark?
Uh, Ken, I appreciate you talking. I got a question. Thirty-one, thirty-two, dead ends on Flora Noa Lucas. When was that completed, thirty-one, thirty-two to Flora Noa Lucas?
Again, I'd have to look up the exact dates, but it's been easily.
You, you're, you're in the city of these next to it.
That's why I'm sitting in the one back of my mind, because it was after I moved in, which was in ninety-four, I would say, ninety-eight, two thousand range.
And, and, and we talked about, this is a state highway, thirty-one, thirty-two. Okay. But the, the land across on the south side of Flora Noa Lucas is sixteen acres owned by who right now?
There's a trapezoid piece of property that's owned by the city of Shreveport, I believe.
And the city would donate that to the state when it's time to build the road?
That's my understan, that, that piece of property was cleared.
Yep.
Through the environmental process for the piece north that comes to Flora Noa Lucas. It was, it was intended for the other half of that diamond in the church.
What year was that trapezoid bought, purchased? Same year?
I, I don't know when the city bought it. I.
But it's, it's prior to oh seven.
I would think so, but I'm, again, I'm not totally positive.
Um, Mr. Clark, Mr. G, anyone, any other points that need to be made?
Ma'am, we, we based, the staff based this recommendation from the information that was provided to us from N L C O G.
All right.
Reference to this thoroughfare plan.
When is the, um, you said that you were planning to have a decision in six months to a year? You found on that place?
Again, we hope to have the, the revised draft back to federal highways by the end of this month. Um, we anticipate thirty to forty-five days for their review of that at that point. Um, again, because we went page by page with them, there shouldn't be any major comments again. Um, following that timeframe, we can do the advertisement for public hearing. Um, we have to have it on the street thirty days prior to that public hearing. Um, an additional ten days after that for public comment. Once that's closed, they'll take the comments that come in, address them appropriate, send them back to federal highways. And at that point, it's in their hands. Um, our, our, N L C O G's contract with the consultants handling this, um, expires at the end of this year.
So would that actually designate the roadway?
Once federal highways makes a ruling on that final environmental document and what we're anticipating from them is what's called a Fonzie. It's a finding of no significant impact, um, for, and for the environmentally preferred alternative.
So I guess I'm trying to get to, cut to the chase here. In your best estimate, and do you think?
I'm trying to pull up a calendar.
A designated, uh, when do you feel, I can't hold you to it, I know, that they would actually designate a pathway?
Late November, early December.
Of this year?
Yes.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
All right, I guess that's all. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Um, all right, board, what is your pleasure?
Uh, so move to, uh, support the staff's recommendation.
Okay, a motion to, I lost my glasses. All right. All right. And the staff's recommendation is denial of the application. So you're moving.
Can I, can we have discussions or not?
Yes. Let's, I think after our motion in a second.
Yeah, the discussion, just if we get a second, we just, if not, we can just, we won't have anything to discuss there.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Andrews. All right, discussion?
Um, this is way outside the box, but it's just a discussion, right? To, in hearing Mr. Larkin's, um, voice about his expense, uh, his partners and his expense and obligations to banks and stuff, how much further do you, you know, is there a way to say, if this is not designated in the next year, two years or something, that he's got, that he doesn't have to keep coming back and keep pushing it forward and, I mean, it's outside the box. I don't know if that's even legal, but how much further?
If I may.
I guess until something's denied, until a study is denied.
Mm-hmm.
If I may advise you, uh, if you, the, the purpose of the thoroughfare plan was to prefer, was to preserve designated right of way.
It hasn't been designated yet, though.
It's basically been designated. It's the preferred route.
Let me ask you this. The council did enact the plan. They did choose to do that. They, they, unlike Bojor, I guess, but.
Well, I know nothing about Bojor, but the, uh.
But our Shreveport did.
Shreveport City Council adopted the, the plan. So it became a part of the master plan.
Okay.
Okay. So it's a, they, it is a preferred route at this point.
Preserved, preserved.
Preferred.
Didn't you say preserved?
No. Preferred or preserved?
I'm under the impression, and we can get it back up, that it's a preferred route.
A preferred route. So, and.
Plan, preserve.
So it's hopefully going to be a designated route.
And they're just going through the process in order to get to the point that, that he was telling you about, where all of the studies are completed and they start with the process of acquiring right of way.
So you're saying that because of, the city council has adopted the regional for Shreveport area thoroughfare plan, that that's the document that states that, that we should, any preferred routes, we should take that into consideration when we're voting, voting for these kind of things?
And that's why you, that's why you have this plan.
Okay.
So they don't designate these future highways and so forth.
Gives us some boundaries and some guidance. Thank you.
And that's what we based our recommendation from.
That's right. Gentlemen?
I mean, this is, uh, one of the more difficult cases, if not.
Absolutely.
That, you know, that, that I've seen in my short time on this board. Uh, I understand fully where Mr. Larkin is coming from. That's why I asked those questions. And we all understand that money makes the world go round. Uh, but one of the big problems I have with this city is, uh, for, for example, we were in Chicago not too long ago, right? And one of the things she said to me was, you look at a city like this and you see the decisions that were made from a planning perspective to make the city what it is. And it seems like we have a, a habit, not a knack, but a habit of being hard-hearted in the city. We, we decide we're going to enact some legislation, we're going to enact beauty seat, and then we have a gang of people come in complaining about it, and we never really get anywhere. And so, uh, again, Mr. Larkin, I, I hear where you're coming from and I, I understand fully. Uh, I do practice law. I do represent clients. Uh, but as regards this body and this, this, the hat that I'm wearing today, uh, my concern is sticking to a plan that's been adopted and approved. Uh, I am somewhat concerned that they're going to ever get the cash for this, uh, to, to bring the highway through. Uh, but it seems as though that's the plan that's, that, that we have. And I think at some point we have to muddle down and stick to the plans. And so, uh, that, that's where I'm coming from on this. And, and I'm, uh, I'm going to give Mr. Larkin some credit here, uh, because I, I do think that he's a very, very savvy, successful business owner, uh, and a developer for many, many decades. And I, I have to believe, given, uh, the information that we got from Mr. Rogers, that there was some indication that the highway may come through this area. Uh, and so that kind of flavors where I'm, where I'm coming from on this.
All right. Any more discussion? Call for the vote?
Restate it, the vote?
Oh, uh, the, the motion by, uh, Mr. Jackson to, um, accept the staff's recommendation of denying the application and a second by Mr. Andrews.
And Windsor. Hope it again.
All right. So the motion is approved. The application is denied at this time. Thank you all. Thank you all for coming. All right. Let's see. We are on tab number eighteen, I believe, case number nineteen, three oh five S three, S C preliminary and final plat. The applicant again, this is our, this is our part B.
Uh, Scott Sinclair again. Uh, you've heard our comments, so we won't, uh, repeat them. But I, but I would like to address two things that Mr., uh, Rogers said because they obviously had an impact. Um, number one, there has never been an approved route through this property for thirty-one, thirty-two before Mr. Larkin bought that property. In fact, the approved route before that, that didn't cross the bayou. And also, in fact, when the city made the decision to four-lane or five-lane Flora Noa Lucas, that was the same point in time when they brought, uh, thirty-one, thirty-two down to Flora Noa Lucas. And at that point in time, I can show you the newspaper articles where the city and the mayor said, we're not going to extend thirty-one, thirty-two because the point is to get traffic to the port. And we're going to go thirty-one, thirty-two to Flora Noa Lucas. We're going to fly up five-lane Flora Noa Lucas, and you got a straight shot to the, to the port on Highway one. So, so that's, that was the planning before then. May there have been some broad brush that, that paints all of South Shreveport as a possible route for, for thirty-one, thirty-two? Yeah, that's possible, but there was never an approved route. And there was never anything, anything that gave Mr. Larkin any better idea than anybody else that owned property in South Shreveport that a road might come through that property. And on top of all that, and I can show you the, the, the staff reports back in two thousand fourteen and earlier where they said, we approved this because there wasn't, we approved the PUD because there was no route for thirty-one, thirty-two at the time. And so we're backing up on what we did. So you just need to, you need to appreciate that. The second thing that you ought to appreciate is that Mr. Rogers, um, when he, when you asked him the, the financing question, he didn't give you an answer, but there is one. You can go online and you can go to the state site and look up the state transportation, long-range transportation plan. And what you'll find is that there are segments of projects statewide, and we're not in category A, and we're not in category B, and we're in category C, and there's not a dime's worth of, of funding available for category C or D under the most aggressive, uh, financing program that they could imagine. So, yes, it is on a schedule somewhere and it doesn't show up. And, and when he said there, there's money, not money available until two thousand forty, that means there's no plan until, and, and there's no plan after that. We're still billions of dollars away on a state funding project, uh, before you ever get to this one. Thank you.
I have a question. So, Mr. Sinclair, back, I don't know what was approved, any routes that may, may have been approved. Obviously, no route was approved.
Yes, there was an approved route.
But, but during all of the public forums and all of the meetings at LSU, when they had all of these proposed routes, alternative routes, that big giant glossy, wasn't this one of them?
No doubt. All, all, but, but it's a question of timing. All of that was after Mr. Larkin bought his property. That was all after Mr. Larkin got his a PUD approved for this property. All of that came after. That's, that's my only point.
Okay.
But clearly, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Gotcha.
All right. Um, since we've already done our discussion, our, on our other portion, we did a motion to approve, to have the speakers at that time, I would ask the board for a motion on this part B.
We're now on eighteen. Is that correct?
Correct. Right. Tab eighteen.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept the, uh, the staff's recommendation.
All right. Second, have a second?
Okay.
All right. Motion to accept the staff recommendation of denial by, um, Mr. Joseph, a second by Mr. Andrews. Any discussion? All right. Call for the vote? All right. And that motion to deny is approved. All right. Moving on to tab number nineteen. Can y'all hear me? Um, case number nineteen, three hundred A X M. This is an annexation case. And I believe, Mr. Clark, we will not have a, an introductory speaker on these annexations. Is that correct?
We have the, uh, city engineer's office. I will stand by if you have any questions. We just submitted the staff report and asked that you accept our recommendation.
All right. Um, well, I will just then ask, this is the, um, annexation of the property on the twenty-nine hundred block of Meriwether Road. Um, is there anybody here that wishes to speak in favor of that application?
Madam Chair.
Come forward, please. Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Benny Myers.
Thank you for waiting all evening.
Eighty-eight thirteen Sinclair Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana.
I'm sorry. Say your name one more time for me.
Benny Myers.
Okay, thank you.
M I E R S.
Okay.
Uh, I'm not here to deny or speak against the project or any way. I represent Temple Primitive Baptist Church, which is on Meriwether Road. And we are looking at the plat that's got up there. I can't determine where we are. And it's not twenty, we're twenty-eight, thirty-three. And the way they've got that circle there, I, I don't think it's twenty-nine hundred block of Meriwether.
Okay. Can we put another picture up there that might be more clear? What about?
He said Temple.
Yeah, did you, which church did you say?
It's on Appleton, South Street.
We're twenty-eight, twenty-eight, thirty-three.
Okay.
It is our understanding, Madam Chair.
Okay, he's way to the right.
These were just houses that were.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in.
Flight path that were.
Not objected.
Bought by the city.
We may already be in the city. I don't know.
Okay.
All of these houses were bought by the city. So this would not be his church.
This wouldn't be.
It's in the flight path, remember?
Right. I'm just trying to figure out what he said. Okay. Do you mind just repeating your question again? I think this might be one for our staff.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to determine, looking at this, I think this is, this is Summer Grove, Summer Grove Baptist Church area.
Is that right?
Yeah. I'm thinking this is the old Sam's parking lot.
Oh, yeah, I remember that.
Twenty-nine hundred block is going to be probably right in here. I just, I'm just wondering why, why they circled these, these two areas.
Mr. Jean?
That was a letter notification, three hundred foot row.
That line that circle is not the properties that are being considered for annexation. The ones that are being considered annexation are the ones that are hatched. The circles only represent where the letters, where the letters would go to, to notify.
Okay, I, that probably makes sense then. And that, I know there's some folks didn't sell their property when they, they were trying to buy that property on the.
Yeah. And, uh, if you pointed a moment ago, where you pointed a moment ago was not included, uh.
Is there a here?
If it's hatched, it's included. But if it's, if it's not hatched, it's not included as a part of what is being considered today.
Did you say Temple Primitive Baptist Church?
Yes.
It's not, it's not in the, uh, area.
I think it's way.
I just looked at it on the Google map.
I was just concerned about what, you know, what usage it's going to be. I, I know it, the claim in our letter is for noise-abatement property book.
Yeah, and that, and that's what happened, it was because of the noise abatement, the policy ordinance of the city of Shreveport, uh, the airport authority. And they acquired that property, so it's owned now by the city of Shreveport Airport Authority.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Myers. Um, is anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone in opposition? All right, um, board?
Madam Chair, motion to approve.
All right, I don't know if it's on Mr. Andrews, I don't think it's on the next section. All right, motion to approve by Mr. Andrews, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Joseph, any discussion, call for the vote? All right, no, application for annexation is approved. Okay.
You don't think we should tell why?
Yeah, I do, if somebody wants to explain.
I mean, because this is, annexation is gonna be a really hot topic here, and it's something that we're just now addressing, and there's all these rules and or compliance that annexations have to meet. So, it's gonna look like, if we don't say why they meet them or why, and educate why, meet them and why they don't, it's gonna cause some hard feelings.
Right, well, the staff recommended approval, correct, of this annexation of these particular properties to make cohesive this area that they already owned the properties, correct?
And it's within the, the loop.
It's within the loop.
It's not outside the loop, okay.
And all the other reasons, if anybody cares to elaborate, I think you guys are tired.
We're trying to understand, Madam Chair, is the board requesting the additional information to be provided to you in reference to annexation policy, or possibly you will designate a, a special time to come and sit down? We can have someone provide you with information?
I'm more, I know we're educated, I'm more worried about the public being educated on annexations and understanding that.
There's, we, we definitely want to contemplate these cases consistently, and I think that's what we're doing. But sometimes our consistency isn't, isn't obvious if we're not discussing why we voted a certain way, so.
I think that, you know, this goes to some other long range plans that, that we have. We have not sufficiently, in my estimation, made information available to the public as we should have. And we are determined to get information out to the public. We have some other, some venues that we're using, uh, through, uh, starting with social media. And we've made a relationship with the local TV stations and so forth to get some information out to the public. I understand exactly what you're saying, I agree wholeheartedly with you.
And, and to the, the, the major stakeholders, like, you know, like when we did the UDC, we, we learned there are certain people, they're gonna be more interested than this than the neighbor next, that lives next to us. There's certain stakeholders, certain people that have money invested and develop in the city, and, and people that live in the city. And, and want it, where their tax, tax dollars are going toward, and infrastructure and the cost of that. So there's all this stuff that I believe that we need to make a concerted effort, because this is, this annexation, I don't think we've been, maybe in the past, is consistent. It wasn't really.
Yeah, we don't, this, annexations are new for our MPC, so.
We haven't been doing them, okay.
Right, that's why, well, yeah.
So now we're doing them, and there are guidelines, there are rules, there's master plans, there's, there's, um, UDCs, or there's things that we look at and decide, yes, no, this fits, or it does not. And that's where I think we need to make a better effort, or a new effort, if it's new to us, then we need to make that effort right now and starting now, that's my two cents.
I agree wholeheartedly with you.
Okay.
Like, like you, so eloquently said, it just sort of, sort of creeped upon us, and, uh, now we got to get the word out to the stakeholders.
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, and to, to Commissioner, um, Dame Marto. Um, I think there's some, there's, there's, obviously, there's some annexations that are coming up, all of them are gonna be different. They are not the same, and so as we go through, when there are some issues, typically the only time people want real explanation is when it doesn't go the way they anticipate. So I think, um, at, at today's meeting at least, we've just worked through them as we go. And if there are questions, we can explain it then, then perhaps the staff can come up with something that's more global, some, at some other point. Before, as far as the date, the only people left to hear the explanation are folks who have annexations on the, on the list.
And my comment is, Madam Chair, for future references, I agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Jackson that these are different and they will be viewed differently, but for future reference, we need to provide more information to the general public. And it helps try to better educate the general public, then we need to be committed to doing that.
Yes, 'cause we've got.
I appreciate that.
We have five on our agenda today.
Yeah, it's like, whoa.
Yeah, so it's a little, so we'll, we'll get them as we go, all right.
You'll have to move this meeting back to one.
Speaking of, we can do that in January. I'll have no objection in January. All right, uh, tab number nineteen, case number nineteen, three hundred A X M, another annexation, applicant is property management section of our, again, we don't have a principal speaker on the annexation cases, correct? Tab number nineteen, case nineteen, three hundred.
I thought we just did.
Oh, did we just do that one?
No, tab twenty.
No, we did.
We're on the next one.
Twenty.
Oh, sorry, yes, sorry, they all look the same, okay. Yes, case number nineteen, three oh one, A X M, applicant is City of Shreveport. The location is the two thousand block of Southern Loop, and I will ask if there's anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Sorry for the confusion, we're all learning about this.
No, I'm Patrick Furlong, the city engineer, and I don't wanna speak in favor of it, I just kinda wanna clarify the.
Oh, you're with the city engineer, okay, great.
Yeah, city engineer.
Thank you, what's your name?
Patrick Furlong.
Okay.
Uh, about the principal speaker, this is a new process for engineering and for the MPC staff, for, for coming through here.
Thank you.
And, um, so, our staff is here to, to answer questions, but we're not necessarily the applicant, so
Okay.
we probably aren't the most appropriate to be the principal speaker.
Correct, okay.
This application was received by the engineering department and was passed along to the MPC.
Gotcha.
So it, it was requested by Councilman Grayson Butcher. And the, and I got up to say that the, the other applications that are on the agenda, I believe the, the applicants are in the audience, so
Okay.
they can speak on that behalf.
Okay, great.
So, uh, we're here if you have any questions, and.
Thank you, thank you.
Hey, Patrick, real quick for you, Joe, this is the two hundred block of Southern Loop?
Yes, sir.
Give us a little bit of oversight on it, if you don't mind.
Uh, it's, it's an area that's developed quite a bit through the years, just, just north of this stretch of the road, the grove was recently approved and is currently being built. Southern Loop is a city-owned road and right-of-way that is in the parish, most of it. To the east of theirs is in the city, but going west from this point to forty-nine and to Linwood, it is all in the parish. So the request was made to our office to bring this portion into the city. And there's been lots of discussions recently about a, a traffic signal at Wallace Lake and, uh.
So it's currently a parish road?
It's, it's currently a city road in the parish.
Okay, so we're gonna annex it, how's that gonna make it better, is it gonna make the road better?
I don't think it's gonna change anything as far, for the road.
Is the city responsible for upkeep at this point?
Yes, at this point, yes.
So I don't see the benefit of annexing the, the right-of-way, that we're already taking care of it, I don't know.
And that was the only reason that we recommended the annexation, because the city has maintained, has maintained the road anyway, so it might as well be a part of the, the city network and be a part of the city.
We're spending money to maintain it, might as well get the taxes.
And there may be intentions to bring in the commercial properties along this also.
It's a commercial corridor.
It is a commercial corridor.
That's another thing on the list of things you look at.
Right.
And it's inside the pool.
Right, and we're already spending money on the infrastructure of maintaining it.
Okay. All right, thank you, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application on Southern Loop? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? All right, board?
So move for the annexation.
Okay, motion to approve by Mr. Andrews, a second by Miss Dame Marto. Call for the vote, what? Who, what?
Jackson.
What did I say? Well, he seconded.
I seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a longer sentence.
It's getting a little late.
My brain stops at six.
Longer than. It'd just be four now.
I can't question.
Come on, man, I'm up too, I got one more to give.
Whoever's doing the minute, please just.
You know the difference between Mr. Jackson and Mr. Andrews, I'm the good looking man.
Yeah, right. No dispute.
All right, did we get our results?
Yeah.
Okay, motion was approved, all right. Sweating, okay. We are on tab number twenty-one, correct? Case number nineteen, three oh one, WFC special use permit and site plan. This applicant is Hemp Hill LLC.
Madam Chair, the staff is recommending, uh, defer of this application in order to, uh, be able to acquire additional information.
So move, Madam Chair.
All right, um, motion to defer by Mr. Joseph, second by Mr. Jackson, correct?
Miss Smith.
Yep.
Miss Smith, that's crazy.
Yes. You can call me whatever you want right now over here. And that motion to defer has been approved.
Last pick.
All right, tab number twenty-two, case number nineteen, three oh three, A X M, it's another annexation. Um, the applicant is the city, this is regarding property owned by Mr. Fertitta, the four hundred block of East Flory Lucas. Is there any one here that wishes to speak regarding this, in favor of this annexation?
Does he come to speak in favor of this?
Yeah, I guess, are you speaking in favor?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Actually, I have one question.
Okay.
As I received this notification, it affects, um, my father's property, which I have power of attorney, he said, in the, uh, war veterans home.
Add, uh, name and address, please.
And I just try, I'm sorry, Mary Elizabeth Morris, twenty-six fifty-one, Dough Ridge Drive in Horton, Louisiana.
Okay.
Okay, um, I'm just really not, I, I don't understand what is, you know, what this is, what part is gonna be annexed, and which part are his, his actual residential properties on here?
Um, Mr. Jean or Mr. someone, Mr. Staff?
If you will, if you'll take a look at that map, you see the area that's, that's hatched, that she's pointing to right now? That's what's in consideration. Everything that was in that big circle is just a notification area that, that we sent.
Okay, that's what I was thinking when it, with the last, uh, man. So everything here, what is this?
That, that is, that is not included, that is not included in this case.
Okay, is that property already in the, in the city, or is there, or do you know?
Yes.
So your father's property is already in the city?
Yes.
So this would just affect adjacent property to his?
I understand that that was our.
So there will be no changes to his property?
It shouldn't, no, it will not affect the status, but it, it just may affect, it can, you know, having your neighbor's property annexed or not, um, might or might not be something property owners are interested in. It's just a notification, but it wouldn't affect your dad's property status, correct?
Cause, um, yeah, well, we were gonna, we, um, thinking that if it was his property, we were, we were gonna be in favor of that, 'cause we're gonna have to sell the property anyhow, and eventually that's gonna be commercialized, I could see that coming.
I believe it's already.
This may, this may boost. Let's hope, for all of us, that it's a property booster, value booster.
It will be, it's not gonna stay those four houses there for ever, on that corner, that's a given, so.
Okay, okay, well, thank you. All right, yes, thank you. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak in regard to this property in any capacity? All right, um, I see the staff is recommending approval of the annexation, um, board?
So move, second.
All right, motion by Mr. Calvin to approve, and second by Mr. Joseph. Call for the vote?
I think they already voted on it. They did.
All right, now, annexation has been approved. All right, are we finally to the last case?
Nope.
No, we have two more, okay. Tab number twenty-three, case number nineteen, three oh four, A X M, another annexation. This one is regarding property owned by the Alta and John Franks Foundation at thirty-eight hundred, the thirty-eight hundred block of Old Moringsport Road, hello, welcome.
Hello, everybody.
Thank you for waiting so long.
No problem, Donnie Barker with Moren Associates, again, representing the property owner and developer for an eighty-two lot, single-family residential, um, project on Old Morens, Old Moringsport Road. And we are requesting that this property be annexed into the city today. Just a few things about the development, uh, we are not requesting spine annexation here. We're abutting property that's already, uh, been annexed into the city of Shreveport. We are designing the project as we speak, um, the development's being designed to the city of Shreveport. Specifications and standards, uh, any infrastructure donated to the city, we'll go through the, uh, normal process. We provide a two-year maintenance, um, bond, and, uh, go through that maintenance process with the city before it's officially taken into the city.
How many years?
It's a two-year.
Two-year.
That's correct. All of the infrastructure put in on these projects, I'm, I'm sure you know this, but I'll just state it again, is one hundred percent funded by the developer. So, all of this infrastructure is put in and donated to the city at no cost. We are, um, like I said, brand-new infrastructure, uh, going in here, and, um, we'd just like your consideration for annexation today. I'm here to answer any questions.
Yeah, I have a question. What, uh, you heard Mr. Larkin talking, he spent money on his subdivision. What kind of infrastructure are you talking about, what, are you upgrading the sewer, or the water, or anything for this property?
That's correct, there is city water and sewer, uh, to the property right now. So we're, all we're doing is extending that water and sewer into the property to service these lots.
But will you have to add any lift stations, or any kind of pumping stations?
There's no lift stations, it's all gravity sewer, and, um, you know, eight-inch water main, typical minimum size.
I guess, we had some, you know, saw the committee's staff's report. What kind of benefit is it adding to the residents of the subdivision to be in the city and not be in the city?
Well, I think, um, you know, it's, it's obviously a benefit to our developer from a marketing standpoint, to say that these lots are in the city of Shreveport, um, we're gonna have city water and sewer.
Okay, but if you stayed outside the city limits, I know it's adjacent to it, and a lot of folks like to be outside the city so they don't pay city taxes.
Right.
You can still get city water and sewer even if they don't annex it, right?
This is correct.
Okay, so is it a benefit to be in the city?
It's, it's our developers' preference.
Okay, be in the city.
They feel strongly about that. One thing, one thing I also wanna say about these lots is, um, our developers working with a company called DSLD, you may or not, may or may not be familiar with them, but DSLD comes in once the infrastructure is built and buys all the lots in the subdivision. So this subdivision won't sit there with lots for sale for three and four years. They, they've made a commitment to the developer to buy all eighty-two lots, so they'll start building houses right away, as fast as they can put them up, and, uh, put people in them. And, um, so, you know, the tax dollars start, start coming in right away.
Okay, well, there's some discussion about the pros and cons, and I just wanted to ask you.
Sure.
I think maybe the benefit may be the city water prices. I think if you're outside the city, in the parish, and get the city water, it's like double the price on the water price.
Well, and there's benefits for other city services as well, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope, all right, oh, oh, yes, you have a question?
No, are we gonna, well, let me just, uh, let me, let me say, um, the concern that I, are you, are you familiar with the recommendation that this commission has from the MPC? No, are we gonna, well, let me just, uh, let me, let me say, um, the concern that I, are you, are you familiar with the recommendation that this commission has from the MPC staff?
Yes, I've read their report.
And, um, what do you say in rebuttal to their, um, um, denial? Or, 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 I should say, recommendation to deny?
The way I interpreted the staff's report was that they had concerns about the, um, fiscal benefit, I guess, to the city in taking this property in. I mean, obviously, our response would be, um, we're gonna buy, we're gonna build two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar homes, eighty-two of them out there plus. Um, so there's a property tax benefit to the city, uh, in that regard. We just got this report Monday. I don't have any studies that were done to show you that, yes, this is a benefit to the city or not. I think that's probably even a bigger discussion than for just this project, um, you know, about, about these cases coming up, whether or not they're a benefit to the city. But, um, from that point, all I can say is that we, you know, we're gonna put eighty-two homes out there, we're gonna have eighty-two, uh, property taxpayers out there and add it to the city rolls. We're providing that, again, we're providing infrastructure under, um, city specifications and requirements that are, um, put in place to make sure that what we're building out there is something that's gonna last, you know, uh, years down the road. So, um, the, the, you know, I can, I can assure the board of the quality of the product that you're gonna get, um, and I can assure the board of, um, you know, the number of taxpayers you can get beyond that, you know.
So what's the value of the houses in your estimate?
They'll be two-hundred-and-fifty thousand plus.
So, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to, no limit, I mean, is there a max number?
Eighty-two of them.
Yeah, different sized lots, so it just depends. Some, some of the lots, they can get a little bit bigger home on it, but I would think two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-and-fifty, somewhere in that range.
So it's a little bit over twenty-million-dollar project when you look at it all, value of the, at least the properties there? Twenty million or something?
Yeah. Twenty million, five hundred, five mil, twenty-five thousand.
So, so, the reason I, the reason I ask that question, cause, because I'm, I'm thinking that, um, that's about three-hundred-thousand dollars, uh, annually in taxes, something like that. Roughly, okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Colvin?
One more question on this, and I know you're more than such. This means the builder actually lays it out, puts the roads, sidewalks, everything in, but when they're annexed, all of that will be given to the city. So all the city's gotta do is if there's a pot, a pothole in it, they gotta maintain it.
Correct.
But it's all built out, they don't spend any money.
That's correct.
Okay.
No, don't. And it's all built to city specifications. They're reviewing our plans, making comments.
Okay.
I just had one question, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at a Google picture, and I'm looking at the road to this, to this location. Has it been upgraded?
Are you speaking about Old Moore's Port Road?
I'm looking at it, appears that, at this point, it is in extremely bad shape, just before it just runs out. Uh, is, is this road going to be improved to city standard by the developer?
The, the developer did not have any plans to do anything on Old Moore's Port Road. In fact, I believe that's a, a state highway in that section. Oh, the Oilfield Road?
Yeah.
Coming off of Old Moore's Port? Okay, so they, um.
Is that how you're gonna access the subdivision?
Uh, for construction purposes. It'll go away, um, once, yeah. We'll be building a new entrance to the subdivision.
All right, any other questions?
So if it was annexed to the city, sorry.
That's good.
Chair, Ms. Demartow? Um, that would uncover all the kind of infrastructures that the city would need to pay for, like police, fire.
Garbage.
Garbage, water sewer, roads. Am I forgetting anything?
Just the long-term maintenance of all of it. Is that what you would include in, I would include that.
Problem is, it's gonna cost more than thirty years than it's gonna cost today.
Yeah, it gets progressively worse.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And my question, that was my question. I think if you take a thirty-year projection, if you take three-hundred-thousand dollars a year in, in taxes that the city will get, in thirty years, it would've been a nine-million-dollar. But the question is now, what happens when you do replacement? Uh, is that a, is that a nine-million-dollar hit? Are the value of the houses more now or less in thirty years? Arguably, we know, uh, what the answer is to that. So I just, I was just trying to think out, because the real, the real concern about annexation is the cost that's gonna happen. And the cost might not happen right away, it's brand-new. The real cost to the city, when I was on the city council, it's been seventeen years ago, seventeen years ago, we had a one-billion-dollar infrastructure problem with no money to pay for.
We still do.
And seventeen, nearly two decades later, we got the same thing. I don't know what's gonna happen over the course of the next thirty years. That makes it, um, that much better, but I just think as we look to add to it, we've gotta think sensibly through what we're adding to it. Uh, and that's why, you know, we were talking about the different annexations, there's some things in the city that if you can help to recover, bring back, it'll add to without any extra cost, cause it's already there. But when you start talking about pulling in something that you didn't have before, then as you can, as you can see, in a strapped city, um, that's facing some shrinkage, quite frankly, but the only thing that's not shrinking is the cost to keep it up. And, um, that's, that becomes an issue for us, um, you know, when it comes to the notion of annexation. You know, I'm pro-growth. Uh, I just like it to be real smart growth. You know, that's, that's our issue right now, I think. Madam Chair?
And I mean, if it, and if it's a factor, we're, you know, building a subdivision in an area that, um, frankly, just hasn't had a lot of development. So, you know, it's good for the community. It's good for that area.
All right. I don't see any questions. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Is there anybody else here in regard to this application?
Lordy.
I'm Bobby Jelks with the, um, at thirteen-twelve North Hern Avenue, and I represent the, uh, the landowner. And I think this is a great project, which is the reason I'm selling the land to the developer. I'm not the developer, but I am the landowner. I like the project. And if you look at the project, it's kinda confusing for it to not be in the city, because there's about an acre. So some of the houses will be in the city and some of the houses will not be in the city. This little tract right here is already in the city, and the church is already in the city. The church really likes the project. They're very much in favor of the project. So I really just wanted to make myself available as the landowner to answer any questions about the project, and, and your numbers are pretty close to right. Curtis, the, uh, there'll be over twenty-million dollars worth of houses in there. And as far as the infrastructure improvements, it would seem to me that if you s- did not spend the three-hundred-thousand dollars a year and you saved it, you'd have more than enough money to maintain this indefinitely. The problem would be if you spent all the tax money on the front end, thirty years from now, you would have a problem with it, and that would go to any infrastructure improvement. But anyway, the developer's paying for everything, all the water and sewer and the streets, and donating that to the city. So obviously, I'm in favor of the project. I wouldn't be selling the land to the developer. So, any questions for me?
Questions for Mr. Jelks?
Yes, sir.
Oh, it's right over here.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in regard to this property? I guess are in favor of this annexation? Um, anyone here to speak in opposition to this annexation? No one? All right, um, all right, let's start. Board, what is your pleasure as far as a motion? Our, this one's a little more difficult, because we are just now acquainting ourselves with the rules of the planning. The, the, the recommended planning.
I submit to you, Madam Chair, is there any information that would, would assist you in making a decision? We've given you the information and our opinion and our recommendation.
I guess, I guess what I'm struggling with is, is, I guess there's gotta be, we're saying, are we gonna be consistent in saying we're not gonna annex anything outside the loop? Or are we not? That's really close. I mean, some of it's in cities, some of, most of it's not, so.
Well, there appear to be about, what, ten or so standards to consider?
Those are the standards that the planners use to make those recommendations.
And in this case, the planners did that. Well, they're all listed here. Yes. Well, I'm gonna have to do that, actually. I'll want to go through each one.
Well, the ones that, I guess, the ones that says it's not, um, configuration must be, proposed annexation and parcel configuration must be consistent with the master plan. It says the master plan does not appear to show this property as being intended or desired for annexation, as it's not inside the loop. The concept of being inside the loop is a smart growth approach that the master plan is based upon, to, development and redevelopment. So it helps to determine properties may be desired for annexa- annexation.
Right, that would be B on our list here.
But the next one is the parcel proposed annexation must be contiguous to parcels located in the city, which it is.
That's why I asked the question, is there additional information we can provide to you to assist you in making a decision? I understand the confusion that you're having. This property is, how far outside, are we calling the loop two-twenty?
Well.
No, it's the master plan designation.
This one, uh, preponderates a little, I mean, well, we're not voting yet. We have some questions.
We should, we need a motion to start the question, but anyway, I'll make a motion.
True.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I second that motion.
Motion to approve by Mr. Colvin and second by Mr. Joseph. Now for discussion.
To approve?
The annexation?
That annexation, or to prove the, okay.
The annexation.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to know.
I just think this one's different than the other ones that we faced.
Well, we approved all the other ones.
No?
So far, we have.
This will just be consistent. But the rationale, though, I think, was straight up on that loop designation, and this one appears to be outside the loop, but this one makes sense to me.
Barely, but it is.
Contiguous to.
I mean, someday, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to draw a line someday.
That's right. We agree with that.
So your, your, your motion is to recommend?
Annexation.
Annexation.
Any other second?
On this case. Question. One more question before we.
Yes.
As we step into this, this floodwater that we're about to step into now, uh, as we go down the road and learn more about, uh, the loop, more about what's in the UDC, more about what the master plan calls for, will we find ourselves looking back over our shoulder at this situation?
Maybe.
And saying, well, uh, they were outside of the loop, but, but we're gonna head and annex them anyway, and then cases come along in the future, as we learn more about this process, are we gonna find ourselves looking over our shoulder?
I think to that point, this, this one, as I've read the staff recommendations, it seemed that the staff was even grappling with this one. I mean, it seemed like that it was a, it was a close call, and I mean, for us, you know, pressing these levers, we, we make tough calls, and this is, uh, again, no different than the Larkin matter, it was a tough call. This, this one.
Everybody can be a Monday morning quarterback.
Right.
But this has got forty-nine up beside it, and this is gonna have some growth, whereas, you know, certain parts of Shreveport can't have it. So is it gonna grow all the way, like he said, no growth's been happening, is it gonna grow all the way up to forty-nine and, I guess, Old Moore's Port Road where that new Walmart is, you know?
I do have a question. Did the, did the, I don't know if I can ask then, but did the city council person, um, want this in, is it Bradford?
It's my understanding he did. I talked to.
If you were to lobby, Madam Chair, I could ask, uh, the city engineer to come, I could.
Okay.
And share that with you.
Yeah, Councilman Bradford is concerned with this. He, uh, is interested in this being annexed, and he has been communicating with me to, to see that it happens.
So he's, he's not as concerned about the cost of the infrastructure?
I don't know that.
Okay, thank you, but he is in favor. Thank you.
It's my understanding also, Lou.
I will just, it is, we are going to have to move forward with this contention that we fall into this category of a shrinking city with residential areas only, not commercial, outside of our loop. Um, that studies show will pull funds from our city, and it will be thin, and it, and it's not recommended by the American Planning Association.
I agree.
It's just gonna be contrary to what the smart growth, I mean, I'm just saying, going forward, we're gonna have to reconcile that we did, that we made this decision against the, the smart growth.
And here's what I hope.
Just saying.
I agree.
But that's a very general statement, not about this particular.
I have, I have something too.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Are you?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Demartow.
I, I just, I just hope as we go forward with this and we're educating ourself, our public, everything, that we get the city council, the people that are gonna be paying, our, our tax dollars, our community, involved in these kind of decisions and stating what they want. It, it, you know, if it's the master plan and we have that loop, and the city council's gonna back that too.
Are we recommending this, or are we deciding?
We're just, we're recommend, no. Is this?
So this will go to the city council?
This is a recommendation, okay.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry, I was just, I was just responding, cause I know there's, I don't know what, how to characterize the concern, but I do think that this is unique in that if we are developing language down the road to justify, uh, this kind of, uh, decision, that we talked about inside the loop as a, as a terminology. Well, this seems to be on the loop, right? While it's arguably outside the loop, these are things that are on the loop. And so from a contiguous perspective, it is not like we're talking about something three hundred feet away from the loop or three miles from the loop. You're talking about things that are on the loop, and so I think that the tangential nature, if you will, of the location, um, gives you some justification to make these kind of decisions, and it is not necessarily always gonna be the same with every even close proximity property. This is literally on the line.
That, and I, I agree with that point, and you can see that going out in the staff report. And that, that's my concern. I, I think, uh, Nancy, they taught us in law school that they look at these on a case-by-case basis, and as you look at the case, uh, you know, as you delve into it, this one, in my opinion, preponderates in, in the way I'm inclined to vote.
Right.
And I might make one, one last thing. Uh, our job is to collect all the data, do the research, provide it to you, and make recommendations, uh, as to what should possibly happen. If you are the board, if there was no need for your decision, you would not be here. So we have provided you with the information, and I think the system works. When we provide you with the information, if you see it differently, that, that's what you should do.
Right, and this is a new analysis for our group. We have not really had to make an annexation analysis, and the, the one that our planner got caught up on was the fiscal benefit, and that term is a lot broader than I would've thought. And it includes things that I'm not thinking of or have never thought of, but it definitely is going to, it's not just gonna, it's not a matter of how much does the project cost versus how much is it gonna pay in taxes, that's not at all. It ha, it does affect the inner city, it does affect services to our, to our citizens inside, so it is quite an extensive analysis, and I just wanna make sure that we're mindful of that in all of our annexation cases, um, cause it's a little deeper. And I don't know if our city council's gonna.
But when you look at it, the proposed land use reflects the future land use map of the master plan. The proposed annexation is in compliance with the UDC. I mean, there, I mean, if, as you look at it, it seemed to me that it was tit-for-tat as it regarded this particular case. So I agree, you know what I mean?
All right, good discussion. Um, so we had a vote.
Try to keep Patrick here as long as we can.
And nobody cut anybody off, and everybody got to talk.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Colvin and second by Mr. Joseph, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I'll call for the vote.
And this is the vote to?
Approve the annexation.
Anexation. Recommend approval. Gotta make them tough calls.
All right, and the annexation is approved.
Unanimous all day long, hundred percent.
All right. Are we on our last, last case, number? Alright, um are we on our last, last case number, it's tab twenty-four, case number nineteen-three forty-one C and nineteen-three oh four P? These are the UDC amendments, is this the?
Telecommunication.
Okay.
We're gonna ask the, real briefly.
Now that they, now that all of the other folks are gone, um it's safe to let the cat in the bag that we're gonna raise taxes on the outer parts.
I really wanted to, I really wanted to ask.
I support whatever. We gotta get our money, we gotta get our money fast.
Mr. Joe.
Impact fees.
Impact fees.
Impact fees.
Something that should be reconsidered.
Uh they're asking us to gamble on annexing, were you willing to gamble and go ahead and build it, even if it's not annexed? And what they were gonna do, they were gonna build it.
Yeah.
And then come back and says, okay, here it is, we're ready to be annexed. Just that's it.
The the tough part was, as I I know it, that the waters is twice as much if you're outside the city, to buy water on the city. So then that's the part of doing the math on, can you afford to live there? So I think that was his benefit, was the water.
I have no doubt it's a benefit for the people who will live there, where the people who are paying the cost, so to speak, are the people inside. And they will lose a little.
Share their services.
Yeah, and they will, and they will not get as, they will have to share their police responsiveness, and they will have to share, there's a lot of things that that it will impact, and I think the idea of impact fees should be reconsidered. And when you really analyze this fiscal cost.
Right.
Because, you know, we're shrinking, that's why, so we're not, we're not.
But again, this is one that's right, I like that phrase, on the loop, I mean, it's, it's right there. I apologize, are we on the next case?
So that we can, so that you can move on if you so choose, uh we recommend deferral on the last case?
So move.
So move.
For for the reason that.
The industry contacted me after we sent the report out and asked for the deferral.
Okay.
Three of the four carriers asked for one-on-one meetings or a conference call to discuss their concerns.
Okay.
Mr. Clark didn't have a problem, but I told them it was your board's decision.
And there's nobody out there waiting on these to do something that this is impacting their?
Um indirectly, no.
Okay, we're not, nobody's here to object.
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you, so a motion to defer?
Yes, so move, second.
Motion to defer by Mr. Jackson, and seconded by Mr. Joseph. Okay, call for the vote?
Alright.
Unanimous, all.
It's the end of the public hearing.
Director's report.
Time now for the old business, Madam Chair, I have a que- I have a statement if if we move into old business.
Oh, yes, sorry.
I would like to recommend that because of what we just talked about in the ensuing conversation and dialogue, Mr. Um executive director and staff. If y'all will schedule, whether it needs to be a mid-month meeting, or some kind of a early training. That will start to continue to make sure that that the commission is educated on the pros and cons of annexation, facts.
We'll be there, right?
Uh uh uh, facts, and all of the information, so we need to really, really put some emphasis on that so that we'll. That the commission is more well-informed when they come back to the meeting, so it doesn't matter how many days it takes, or how long.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Unless you wanna hang out for a couple more minutes.
Just keep, maybe just need to keep educating, and by the way, Madam Chair, I also support one o'clock meeting time.
I I support that, starting in January.
Oh, it's too late, I'll make a motion to move the meetings to one o'clock. Second, all in favor?
I'll be here at three. Anybody else wants to take over the mic?
Thanks, thanks, Karen, I appreciate that support.
I'm sorry, people have lost their minds.
I'm sorry.
What else, um any, um?
Executive Director's report.
Yeah, the Director's report.
Real, real quickly, I had a whole lot to say, but I will not bore you this afternoon. We we have been, we have been contemplating, and 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 this shows me that that it it really could be quite helpful. Of trying to have a retreat with staff and board to get some additional training and information. That will be valuable in in these type of situations, and one of the things we were talking about uh was possibly getting Charles Marone. From strong times, that that this article is referencing, an annexation would come. Steven and I had a chance to meet him in person, and he's quite a dynamic person. And I think he would thoroughly enjoy that, and I think that, you know, we've been tracking our budget very closely, and our budget is in great shape. And we do have, we do have funds that would allow us to do, you know, such a retreat.
Well, if you need a space to lease, I can.
We were gonna, we were gonna have it out at the yacht club.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we're gonna invite y'all to the yacht club. Let me know. No, no, I'm just hosting y'all. I got some space in the church to uh invite y'all, since the budget is healthy.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Clark, did you have anything else? Alright, are we ready? I don't wanna cut anybody off, y'all good?
No, uh one one last statement.
Uh Mr. Jackson's one last.
I just, let me just say, um uh thank you all so much, it's been um a year and, excuse me, a year, two years and um. No, three years and three months, um that I've had the privilege to serve here with everybody. Uh doesn't appear that my um my my scheduling responsibilities will allow me to continue to serve, so Madam Chair, I will. I, it is my intention to tender a letter to the Cattle Parish Commission, who was the appointing body who appointed me. To make them aware of my intent to resign in this service, but I'm hopeful that um the, I know that the work will go on, and if there's any way I can be of any service, certainly, I'm uh. I'll always be available, but I I do appreciate having served with everyone who is here, and I continue to pray for y'all as you continue to do the people's work, and and I'll be around.
Yeah, that prayer would be greatly appreciated, I just wanted to say that it's been a pleasure to work with you and to get to know you, your insight and your wisdom, and the way you bring it to. The constituents who come here with their business, with their dollars and their efforts, uh breaking it down in in a way that they can understand and. Appreciate sometimes decisions that they may not find favorable to them, uh so it's just been a pleasure.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'll echo that.
Yes, make that.
Definitely, my 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 biggest takeaway is gonna be my new friend that I've made, who is in my cellphone. And um I hope to get invited to the birthday party next year.
You will.
At the Yacht Club.
And it has, I have learned a lot.
Me too, by the way.
Um from our former councilman, um and it's been an adventure, for sure, it started out with a bang. And I I really do, I really am glad that that we got to do this together, and I, yeah, so thank you.
Appreciate your leadership.
I will.
Can I ask one more question before you, one point of, Mr. Clark, and I I know this is, this is off, we're done. I saw MPC in the news last night, as it relates to the food truck thing, can we anticipate something like that coming up at the next board meeting? Or will we receive some information?
Did you have something to do with that?
Time in rela- in relation to that?
Just just very briefly, and I said I wasn't gonna, I was gonna share that information, but I was trying not to, because it was getting close to the end. But uh we we realized something, uh you know, uh Mr. Jackson was 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 kidding, I hope, with the, in my desire to uh revamp. Uh and and look at the food truck ordinance, and put some comprehensive rules together. But we found that uh what we did was not widely accepted, and part of the reason that it was not widely accepted was because. We did not contact the members of the industry, we did not get any input, that, as you talk about stakeholders, we did not get any input. From them in reference to how the ordinance would affect them positively or negatively. So in order to start that process, after the the ordinance was re- uh set by by the city council, uh for for the consideration. We have uh reached out to the industry, and we're having a face-to-face meeting with food truck vendors. We had our first one this past week, uh and it was well-attended, and we had the three ra- three TV stations there. And that's helped us get the word out that we were not the enemies of the food truck uh community, that we were actually the friends, and we want to. Come up with an ordinance that would be widely accepted by you, as well as the city council. So we were reworking this, and it will be coming back through you.
So what I hear you say is now we're getting ready to learn about annexation, and we get to lick this thing about food trucks as well.
And I and I told them they must feed y'all, you know.
Well, I want them to be licensed before I give them.
Right.
But you're absolutely right, you're about to get uh some more information about food truck.
And and wireless power.
Nobody's really happy with with everything. There are some, there's some happiness with some things, but nothing, nobody's real happy with everything, so we can get that.
Well, Mr. Clark, thank you, I I felt like I needed to hear that, because when I saw it on television, I went, oh, Lord, we're out there again, and thank you.
We're we're actually in good shape this time.
Alright, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, we are turned.
Thank you, Madam Chair.